At GPAC in Troligan today. Tonight's meeting will be held with councillors and guests joining us in person and virtually. And I'm pleased to welcome with me tonight the Deputy Mayor, Councillor Sharon Gibson, Councillor Potter, Councillor Morgan, Councillor Howe, Councillor Barnes, Councillor Pugsley and Councillor Campbell. We'd also welcome our CEO, Steve Piersanti, and the executive team who are joining us tonight. I'd like to acknowledge that we're meeting here tonight on the traditional land of the Barakalung people, who are part of the Gunai Kernai Nation, and we pay our respects to their elders, both past and present. If there are any other elders present, I'd also like to acknowledge them. Just moving on to some housekeeping items. We conduct our council meetings under the governance rules currently in place. We welcome all members of the public attending, both via the live stream and in person. And I would thank you for respecting protocols of the meeting, which ensure that we can extend the appropriate courtesy and respect throughout our meetings tonight. If councillors could ensure that they raise their hands or stand if they wish to speak, so I can see them, remain seated to speak directly into the microphone to ensure that it can be heard via the room and via the live stream, and when voting, raise their hands and leave their hands raised until I've called their names. We'll now move on to apologies and leaves of absence, and the only apology we have tonight is that of Councillor Lund. Next on the agenda is item three, Adoption of the Minutes, commencing on page four of tonight's agenda. Councillor Morgan?
Yes, I have an amendment to the acknowledgements. Where are we? Fourteen acknowledgements of the minutes, which is Councillor Morgan acknowledged advance more well, not events more well. And twelve point one. Sorry? Yes, twelve point one. I believe I was a vote against twelve point one.
Mr. CEO, those amendments being noted?
Yes, thanks for saying that. We'll check that, given Councillor Morgan's mention, she was unsure about that second one. We'll just verify that on the recording, but we'll make those amendments accordingly.
Note you, Councillor Gibson. All right. Councillor Morgan, are you moving the amended minutes?
Yes, I would like to move them, thank you.
Councillor Gibson, I noted you.
Happy to second.
Happy to second. Do I have any opposition? Move that the amended minutes be accepted. Thank you, councillors. Declarations of interest, councillors. Do I have any councillors that have a conflict of interest? Councillor Campbell?
Yeah, ten point seven.
Bear with me, Councillor Campbell. Ten point seven, yep. Councillors, do I have anybody else? Councillor Barnes?
Nine point two.
Nine point two. And any other councillors with a conflict of interest? Councillors, I'm going to declare a past conflict of interest on item nine point three, which is the update on progress of strategic work for five four eight three and five four nine five Princess Highway to Troligan, known as Hollydale. Bear with me, councillors. Bear with me, councillors. Moving on from there, we move on to acknowledgements, and I've had a couple of councillors already let me know that they have acknowledgements, so I'll go to them first. Councillor Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, Mr. Mayor, I wish to acknowledge the recent passing of Anne Murphy on January twenty seven, twenty twenty five. And I would like to express my sincere condolences to the Murphy family and to all those who loved and cared for her. Anne was a passionate community leader. She was a staunch advocate for the rights of women and workers in the Latrobe Valley and beyond. She was a much-loved wife and mother, grandmother and friend. Anne was a proud trade unionist. She worked as a union organizer in the health industry, and she was elected as President of the Gippsland Trades and Labour Council. In twenty twenty four, Anne received her life membership of the Gippsland Trades and Labour Council. Through her advocacy, Anne established the Women's Action Committee at Gippsland Trades and Labour Council. She worked on a number of projects with the GTLC, most recently with young people in the domestic building course. Anne had a passion for workplace safety. Outside of her trade union background, Anne was involved in many aspects of community life, including helping to found the Latrobe Women Creating Conversations Group after the closure of Hazelwood. And she was always ready to step up for the community. She was a colourful personality, friendliest woman you could possibly imagine, and I think her passion, her advocacy and her infectious smile will be greatly missed in many parts of Latrobe City and across the state. Vale, Anne.
Thank you, Councillor Morgan. Councillor Pugsley, you had an acknowledgement?
Through you, Mr. Chair, thank you. I'd just like to acknowledge the fantastic event that we had about two weeks ago at Old Gipstown, the Volunteer Connections event that we had. I'd like to acknowledge the fantastic, the amount of work that went into it through our council officers, but also via Old Gipstown as well, and all the volunteers that actually exhibited. I'd like to acknowledge all of those. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Pugsley. Any other councillors with an acknowledgement? Councillors, I have one I'd like to acknowledge, which was the Australian Boomers' Asiatic FIBA qualifications, which were held at Interogon at the Gippsland Regional indoor sports stadium on Thursday and again on Sunday. I'd just like to acknowledge Basketball Australia for actually allowing us to have those events here, for putting them forward. I'd also like to acknowledge the outstanding work our teams across the board did in putting that event on. Speaking to the senior members of Basketball Australia and Basketball Victoria, they were very, very happy and very, very surprised at how good an event our team put on. They thought the work was outstanding. And if I could, I'd also like to thank the Morwell Basketball Australia Association and the Troligan Basketball Association. Basketball Australia put on a coaching clinic for juniors, which was attended by over 200 people, both at Morwell and Troligan, and it was the Morwell and Troligan Basketball Associations that actually provided the coaches for that. And that was just an absolutely outstanding event. And as with anything to do basketball, we have two outstanding Latrobe City residents that came to the party. That's Jade Melbourne, who's played for the Australian Opals, and Jack White, who's played for the Australian Boomers in basketball. Both turned up to all events, particularly with the kids. They were happy to give their time. And if you saw it Thursday and Sunday, they were happy to stand round for half the game, signing autographs, getting photos taken and generally doing anything that was asked of them. So to everybody involved with that, thank you very much. Okay, councillors, we now move on to, sorry, Councillor Gibson, you've got one.
Yes, sorry. Continuing on from the basketball theme, I'd like to acknowledge the work and the effort put in for the wheelchair basketball challenge. It was a corporate challenge, and I had my fellow councillor across there join me, but we also had Jade Melbourne on our team. It didn't do us any good, but we tried. And some, three or four of our officers jumped in to do it. But not only did Basketball Vic and Basketball Australia do it, we had some businesses from here who actually joined and made it a really great event. But what was so good about it is whoever won, there was, oh, Valley Ford, was it? Yep, who put the money up for whoever was the winner, and the money was donated to a charity. So, you know, credit where credit's due. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Gibson. Councillors, any other acknowledgements before we move on? Okay, we will move on to public participation time. We have a number of speakers tonight. To those that are speaking, you'll be given, please come up to the lectern, you'll be given three minutes to speak. At the end of that three minutes, we ask you to wait round just to see if there's any questions from councillors. Our first speaker tonight, speaking on the sales process update of thirty nine, sorry, fifty nine, I'm going to put my glasses on. Fifty nine to ninety one, Philip Paray Churchill, which is Hazelwood House, is Margaret Guthrie, representing the Churchill and District Community Association. Margaret, feel free to start whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I start, I'd like to acknowledge the traditional owners of the land upon which we're meeting and pay my respects to all our First Nations people. Thank you for your time and attention tonight, councillors. I'm here to talk about the report and recommendations on Hazelwood House. Churchill and District Community Association tipped some time ago that if the property failed to sell, we might find that we're in a situation where the facility is no longer fit for purpose, has reached end of life and might indeed be demolished. So the report came as no surprise, but because we had that foresight, we've actually discussed what we think should happen. And I'm here on behalf of CDCA tonight to ask for a temporary stay of execution, as it were, because it has been so evident that before you are perceived to impose a decision on the local community regarding a much-loved, community-valued asset, that you do a bit of community engagement and actually bring the local community along with your decision-making process. Local government is really well-placed to talk to local people. And it's really important, in the case of the demolition of Hazelwood House, because the sort of feedback we've been getting is, but the building looks all right from the outside, why can't it be used? Why can't it be utilised for something? Which speaks to the fact that council's actually really well-maintained that building over the years that it's now been vacant. And people have said to us, you know, I've walked around the building and it's fine. And we've noticed, of course, that the officer's report says that there is internal water damage. And as someone who lives not far from the facility, it wouldn't surprise me at all if there are enormous cracks in the wall, because, as some of you may know, Churchill is built on clay and everything cracks in Churchill. It would be really useful if you had a short community engagement period, perhaps a stand at the shopping centre. We've even got a community market coming up on the first Saturday of May, an ideal time to do a display with photos so that people can see what you mean by water damage. Is that just a little brown stain on the wall? Or is that the ceiling has collapsed due to water damage? Nobody knows. And there is a suspicion within the community that, oh, well, council's just decided to bulldoze. May I speak for a moment longer?
You certainly can, Mrs. Guthrie.
Thank you. And we've had lots of feedback to say that, oh, the roses, they're beautiful. They ought to be donated to Morewell Rose Garden, or they ought to be relocated to Hazelwood South Hall, where there is a tenant and they have a community garden and the grounds adjacent could do with a bit of, I'm going to use the vernacular, a bit of tarting up. So, and other people have said, what happens to the plaque that's near the entrance foyer? There should be a memorial near the front gate, you know, one of those stones with a plaque that says this marks where Hazelwood House was, because this, the community of Churchill raised the money to have that aged care facility in Churchill. And the sense of ownership is still there. People view it as theirs. We well understand that actually you own the land. It was originally purchased by council, or the Shire of Morewell as it was then, from the Urban Land Authority. So the land is yours. But if you bulldoze our building, I think there's going to be a backlash unless you actually engage with the community, only needs it to be a short period of time, and put before the community some options. Perhaps it should be bulldozed because it's likely to sell prime residential land in the middle of Churchill. We could just leave it alone and see what happens, and it's going to cost ratepayers, not council, ratepayers, extraordinary amounts of money to maintain it and do the security and the slashing and all the rest of it. And maybe even a bit of talk about the car that went through the front fence and almost landed up through the front window at the foyer, and the homeless people that have been moved on because they've been setting up shop in the entrance foyer. There was even a young man who was camping down the bottom of the back.
Sorry, Mrs. Guthrie, have you almost finished? Do you want one last sentence to wind it up?
I hope that I'm convincing you, I'm certainly asking you, to conduct a bit of community engagement and bring the community along with your decision-making process. Thank you.
Thank you. Just hang on there. I know Councillor Gibson's got a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mrs. Guthrie. A question for you, though. If there, if it was possible for it still to be an aged care facility, would you still want the community consultation or no, get on, sell it for that to occur?
There is no doubt in my mind that the community sentiment is such that we want an aged care facility in Churchill. But I think the reality is that it has reached its end date. It is not fit for purpose. You're indicating that perhaps that's not true? I don't know. But I'll tell you what, nobody really wants to see a derelict building be vandalised, perhaps subject to arson, sit there for years on good land available for development. Something needs to happen.
Thank you very much.
Councillors, any other questions? No? Thank you, Mrs. Guthrie, we'll see you later on. But Mrs. Guthrie's got another question later on in the day. She's speaking again on item ten point one. Okay, councillors, we move on to our second speaker tonight, who I believe is unavailable. We'll move on to our third speaker tonight on item nine point two, planning permit application twenty twenty four one seventy one, use of land for domestic animal husbandry, five dogs, Gail Knowles. Is Gail here? Thanks, sorry. Councillor Barnes, you've got a conflict of interest? We'll let you leave the room, sorry, forgot all about that. Sorry, Gail, we'll just wait for Councillor Barnes to leave the room. Go ahead, Mrs.
Good evening, councillors. I'm a registered breeder with dogs, Victoria. I've owned Australian shepherds for over eighteen years, exhibited them at shows for most of that time, and I've been breeding them since two thousand and thirteen. My five dogs are my companions, they're my hobby, my social life. They've provided me with many years of enjoyment and a wide circle of friends from all over the world. I travel extensively exhibiting my dogs and engaging with the public at shows and events throughout the year in order to promote pedigree dogs. I'm a regular participant at the Melbourne, Sydney, Adelaide and Canberra Royal Shows, as well as major events such as the Dog Lovers Show. My dogs mean the world to me. They are central to everything I do. The puppies I breed provide other people with the pleasure, the friendship and the companionship that I experience with my own dogs, and I hope to be able to continue this for many years to come. I read the planning officer's report on Friday and would like to address a few points. The local laws team, we've only ever been notified of three complaints and they've all come from the same neighbour whose dog barks more than any other dog in the area. In the fourteen years we've lived here, not a single other neighbour has said anything other than that they hardly ever hear them. In fact, one neighbour recently asked if I still had my dogs because she hadn't heard them for months. One local laws officer told me it was fine to have extra dogs staying at our place as long as they were registered to their own address, and as far as I know, this has been the case, but that then becomes a reason to reject my excess dog permit. I've also had a council staff member call me and give me completely wrong information about the excess dog permit. We've not built kennels because we would never use them. The report makes it sound like the dogs are put outside at six AM and not let back in until six PM, but this is not the case. I work from home and usually have one or two dogs lying at my feet keeping me company. My husband spends a lot of time in his workshop and he's always accompanied by some dogs. I could not do my work if the dogs barked, as it requires long spans of intense concentration, and part of it is via video or audio conferencing. The report considers that our proposal for a permit is inconsistent with the planning scheme. The property at seventy one Main Street, four doors down from our house, has been granted exactly the same permit for exactly the same purpose. They have less land than us and have exactly the same zoning. How can be inconsistent with the planning scheme for us but consistent for them? They have the same number of dogs and we share the same neighbours. I'm the only registered breeder of Australian shepherds in the Latrobe Valley area and going up east up to the border. I've sold quite a few puppies locally to families in the valley. However, most of my puppies are sold to the metropolitan area with a small percentage going to regional Victoria, interstate and New Zealand. Only once have I had three litters in one year, and that was followed by a year when I didn't breed at all. Right now, I only have one fertile female and she's restricted by the Dogs Victoria Code of Ethics and my own personal ethics to two litters in an eighteen-month period and five litters in her lifetime. The puppies go to their new homes by the time they're ten weeks old, and when they are here, they have no impact on anyone but us. Thank you for your time. I sincerely hope you vote to approve my permit.
Thank you, Mrs. Knowles. Councillors, any questions? No? Thank you, Mrs. Knowles. Councillors, our next speaker is also on item nine point two, and that's Karen Blumquist. Karen, are you available? Are you here? Great. Same thing, you've got three minutes, you'll hear a bell with thirty seconds to go and a bell at the end of it, and just hang round for any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I just wish to say that we've known the applicant, Rick, for a good number of years, as our property adjoins their property, and we wish to stress for us not to be a personal matter to the applicants. Our main issue is the barking of these dogs and the noise that's coming from the property. The house that these dogs are in is a brick veneer, and I don't think they realise the intensity of the barking and what it does to you. So I just want to ask you, councillors, have you had one barking dog in your neighbourhood that has affected you? Or try five? And just have some sort of idea of the noise that does come from the property. Now, it's morning and night, even though the applicant has disputed that. We feel that it grinds at us and it has effect on our mental health and the ability to concentrate on whatever we may be doing inside or outside. We've had people over socialising outside and inside and said, how the hell do you put up with this barking? We understand there is possibly another dog breeder on the main road, but I thought it was about a kilometre away. They're in a rural setting on acreage with proper shedding, and we just feel that this breeding within a residential area with houses all adjoining is not suited. And we just feel that this breeding within a residential area with houses all adjoining is not suited e- just for our health alone. The applicant had twelve supporting applicants going by your planning permit, um, planning officer's report. Of those twelve people, they don't live in the neighbourhood. So how can they put up approval to that, um, application? So I, uh, I hope you take into consideration the recommendation that was put up by the planning officer because it is having effect on all our neighbours. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mrs Blumquist. Just hang on one sec. Just, just hold you for a second. Councillors, any questions? Councillor Pugsley.
Uh, thank you. Um, thank you, Karen. Um, is there a particular time of the day that the barking is, that you hear is the worst?
It can be all day. It can be all day with maybe an hour break or, um, at times. But I did put in a two-week recorded, uh, times of when those dogs barked. And the only time that they really didn't bark was on hot days. They're obviously kept inside in the air-conditioned house. So if you wanted to look at the local laws report that I put up, um, for the two-week recording, that will give you an idea of the times. But when you get five dogs barking, it's quite loud and annoying.
Thank you.
Councillors, councillor Gibson? Councillor Howe, was that a hand up or a?
That was an itchy ear.
That's an itchy ear. Okay, sorry.
Thank you for that. Could you please tell me, so are you saying the dogs are normally outside?
Uh, well, I would probably say that during the evening, too late at night in the evening, they're probably not.
But during the day?
Yes, yes, I am.
No worries. And do you hear the four doors down or you're saying it's actually a bit further and it's on, um, acreage?
Well, I didn't know where four doors down. I wasn't aware of that, especially at all. The one I was talking, that was a kilometre out of town. On acreage and I think it might be rural, rural residential zone. But I understand the applicant, um, considers these dogs part of their family. They're like their children. I get that, but it's having an effect on our neighbourhood. And, so.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you.
Councillors, any other questions? Thank you, Mrs Blumquist. Thank you. Councillors, our next speaker on the same item, nine point two, is Mick Wirick. Mick, are you here? Yep, thanks, Mick. Same thing, three minutes. You'll hear a bell or a ding at thirty seconds to go and then one on three minutes.
Okay, thank you, councillors. Uh, councillors, I'd like to just give you a bit of an overview of, um, I've gone through the agenda and the reports and the like. Uh, and, uh, my background in Turn Gabby, I bought down there in twenty eighteen and, uh, retired in twenty nineteen. And since then, the dogs have just been full on until late last year when, uh, the, uh, the reports were made about and the complaints were made. Dogs at the moment, they're not, not a problem. Hardly hear them, do hear them, but not as they were. But I'd like to slide to draw the councillor's attention to the, um, the officer's recommendation on page one eighty-three of the agenda. And, uh, that he goes on to say that, um, what should be adopted and, um, what can't be met in attachment one is the, um, the noise management, uh, and the use of the land, uh, compatibility. Uh, it's a re- a residential area. Um, and going on through the agenda, the site history on page one eighty-six, the applicant wrote that, uh, she's got, um, sorry, that, that the officer re- uh, reported that there's been a number of offences, um, created and noted. Uh, and it just gives you the intent that, um, Mrs Knowles is a report, a repeat offender and she has scant, um, uh, concerns and, um, scant regards, uh, to the legal laws and to her neighbours. Um, we also have concerns that the applicant has put in writing in attachment three that they will not make any, um, structural changes, uh, to abate and order, uh, confine the noise, uh, which is consistent with the, um, the EPA guidelines. Uh, where it goes on to say, um, that, uh, the, sorry, having trouble reading my notes. Um, yeah, so it, it goes on to say that the, um, the, uh, she can't meet the, uh, the EPA guidelines because there's, uh, there's not the distance between the properties. Um, and, uh, she's not going to do that, in her own words. Incompatible with residential, um, use, uh, due to noise. Um, I just asked the councillor to accept the officer's recommendations uh, and to use, um, the final paragraph, um, of that assessment was that the use of the land for, uh, animal husbandry for five dogs, um, is considered to be incompatible uh, and the surrounding, um, use of the land for residential purposes.
Yep. So. Thank you, Mr Wirick. I'll get you to hang on one sec. You timed that perfectly. Councillors, any questions? Looks like you got away with it, Mr Wirick. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it. Councillors, we're just going to bring councillor Barnes back into the room. Thanks, councillor Barnes. We're now moving on to item ten point one, which is the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five mid-year budget review. Um, we have one speaker on this. Mrs Guthrie, if you'd like to make your way to the stand again. Good to have you back. Know the red, you know the routine, three minutes, bell at thirty seconds, bell at the end. Tie the, the stage is yours.
Thank you. Um, Churchill District Community Association has a standing resolution on our books that, um, the president, that's me, should, um, turn up at council meetings whenever budgets are being discussed and advocate for public toilets in Churchill. Um, the reason being, next month, uh, March, sixty years since the proclamation of the township of Churchill and residential building commenced in our town. Sixty years and we still don't have a council-owned and maintained public toilet in the town centre. Appalling as far as I'm concerned. So appalling. You know, I went to the shopping centre recently on a Saturday afternoon, um, just after the privately owned public toilets at Hazelwood Village Shops had been upgraded and signage put in. And I parked my car and in the next row of cars, as I got out of my car, you know, you give a cursor a glance around, and there was a woman squatting between two parked cars, urinating. How embarrassing for me and for her. We crossed paths a little bit later. She apologised and she said, I got the bus into Churchill and there's no public toilet available. I was here at last budget, uh, consideration and at the time, the then council decided that they would pay for the upgrading of the privately owned, um, public toilets at one end of the shopping centre and put in some directional signage. That's very nice. But the problem has not been resolved because those toilets close at five o'clock on a weekday and they also close on a weekend about two or three on a Saturday and one PM sharp on a Sunday. So there are still no public toilets available in the town centre during extended retail trading hours. Council has a public toilet plan and it clearly says, when you look at it, that a rather urgent priority is a public toilet facility in Churchill. And it has been costed in that plan at about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, probably a bit more now. So when I look at the mid-year budget review tonight, fair enough that you're putting money into maintaining leisure centres and, and upgrading them. The public wants their swimming pools. Um, and fair enough that you're allocating some money to the transition fund. But you're putting over a million dollars, if I recall correctly, into capital works. Why not begin capital works for a public toilet in Churchill when there's council-owned land, a site has been identified, like you could begin now? Why wait? We need a public toilet in our town centre.
Thank you, Mrs Guthrie. Councillors, any questions? Nope. Thank you, Mrs Guthrie. Appreciate it. Councillors, we now move on to item ten point two, which is Regional Community Sports Infrastructure Fund Round Two. And Mr Peter Quigley. Joining us in, ah, there you are. That's all right. Take your time, Peter. Three minutes, bell at thirty seconds and then you get a bell right on three.
Yes, Mr Mayor.
No worries.
Could I just before the clock starts, um, out?
They've gone round the other way.
Um, that bad. Beck was supposed to talk as well. We didn't read his specs, so I've got to manage this while his specs.
Yep, we can share. That's fine. Yep, go for it, Peter.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Councillors, good opportunity to talk to you tonight. Uh, I'm secretary of the YNAR Recreation Reserve Committee of Management. Beck McCullough is the coordinator netball for the YNAR Football Netball Club. Kim McCully, Kim Bohr, is president of the YNAR Tennis Club. We're here tonight because of our utter frustration, disappointment that council after.
Sorry, Peter, can I just stop that?
Just hang on. Um, I'm sure it's a really big time for.
You'll have a conflict. That'll be a conflict.
Sorry, I just realised.
Yep. So if you want to leave the room, councillor Campbell.
I just realised when I saw it.
Sorry, Peter, we'll chuck that back to three minutes to get you started again. If we could, thanks, IT guys. So we'll get you started again, mate. It's all right. Just wait for councillor Campbell to leave. And she's got to be out of sight. And she is. Thanks, Peter. We'll start again. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I won't go through what I worry about through.
Yep.
This, this project has been in the mix, if you like, for ten years. And I've provided, or we've provided councillors with a briefing that over the weekend have explained the history of this project. It's not just something that's come up. We've been at this for ten years. And it was, uh, we've been through every flange and hoop. We've been through every process. We've been through every strategic planning process to finally get to number two priority for councillors through the last recreation needs analysis and to see the project get to this far and then councillors' decision not to fund it. It's a, it's a real blow. It's kicking the, um, guts for our community. Uh, I'll, I'll talk specifically about the netball issues because they're probably the, the most significant. On a, on a day of, um, a max day for netball, there's about a hundred and sixty people in competition for that one toilet, one ha- females. Getting it correct here. One hundred and sixty females in competition for that one toilet, one hand basin, one change room. It's bad. It's chaos and it can't cope. Now, probably the, the biggest risk factor, apart from setting kids home soaking wet after a game, there's can't, there's no shelter for them. You know, they can't get into a change room, get dry. Where we have injuries or require strapping for our, for the girls, they've got to go into the male football trainers room. And that requires Beck to ride or someone else to ride, uh, you know, to escort the girls in to make sure it's done. So that in itself is a high risk and it's totally inappropriate that in two thousand and twenty-five we have females having to compete with bikes here for a first aid room. So facilities still stop are inadequate and they are a significant risk in terms of having young girls as young as age, right through to senior age of, um, thirty-something, uh, having to access that trainers room. It's not on. And I think I, I would ask councillors that have young girls that play sport, would you like them in that, in that environment? Certainly not. We've, we've been, um, as I said, you, and you've got the detail around where the, uh, project has been for ten years. And it is really disappointing to get to this stage and for it not to progress. YNAR as a community has, has done its bit in terms of providing recreational leisure facilities for, uh, our community. Um, and I might get this perhaps tabled later on, but that's the reserve. There's all but two facilities, two buildings on that site that were provided by the community, built by the community and, and constructed by the community. We've done our fair share. We've been patient in waiting for this project. It is vitally needed. YNAR's population has doubled in the last ten years, doubled. That's put huge strain on our, our current facilities and there hasn't been the commensurate investment in community infrastructure. This, a bit like the Churchill, um, public toilet. If not now, when? What process do we need to go through to convince council that this is an investment in our future kids and our female participants in sport? At the moment, they are disadvantaged. They are discriminated, I don't like to use that word, but they are. You know, we treat netballers very differently and female sports people than our bikes. That's a fact and it's not on. And there's no, there is no excuse for it happening and there is real, really no excuse for this project not proceeding as has, you know, we've been told time and time again, yep, we're just there, we're just there. Well, I'll leave with this question, yeah? If not now, when and how? That's what we, that's what we're asking. Thank you. That's why I'm three minutes.
You've done well, Mr Quigley. You've done well. Done that before. Councillors, councillor Gibson's got a question. Councillor Morgan? You've got a few there. Peter, hang on two secs.
Thanks, Peter. Um, bit different to you being on that side than this side. I've got a good memory. Uh, question for you, please. Now, there is, um, the other side of the ground, and correct me if I'm wrong, there's a, a building.
Yep.
Now, what is that for, please?
So there's no female change, so councillors referring to, I had a laser, sure. So on the eastern oval, there are, is a, a multi-purpose room, which is used for junior, which has just had the floor replaced here, thankfully. Uh, and there's ma- there's male changers that they've serviced the eastern oval. So cricket, ma- male fo- male, male football and cricketers use those changers. There's two changers there. Um, so that's that side. So there's no dep- there is not one, apart from the one netball changer room in western oval, there is no other dedicated female change room. And if, if we have males and females competing, for example, in the, among the twenty-fifth, we've got the gathering of the female football, uh, event in our, there's eighteen female, female football teams coming from all across the, the world to play footy at the now. We're lucky that we haven't got five playing on that day, some in, some out because we couldn't accommodate. Eighteen's going to be as stressed as it is, but we just haven't got the facilities. And it, it is twenty twenty-five. It's no longer acceptable to, I mean, we, uh, it's no longer acceptable to expect our females to be treated like second-class citizens and that's what this cri- this situation creates.
I can relate on another matter, but that's fine. Thank you.
No more. Councillor Morgan, you've got a question for Mr Quigley.
Through you, Mr Mayor. Um, Mr Quigley. Um, how many women's teams do you have across netball and football at YNAR?
Um, I'll, I'll give it to the, the, the president over here.
Uh, hi, how are you all going? Thank you. Um, so from under nines to under thirteens, we have five teams. And for our seniors, which, uh, which follow the Mid-Gippsland League, we have three junior teams, which are under thirteens, under fifteens, under seventeens, B grade, C grade, D grade and A grade. Um, and with football, we have the three senior sides and then we have the three, three junior sides that use the other oval. So on any given day, when we actually have our Saturday competition, there's two hundred and thirty female, females, because we're hosting another team, another town, club, um, that need to use that same toilet and shower.
Thank you for that. Councillors, any other questions?
Mr Mayor, can I, can I, um, to, uh, to assist to the councillor's question? One other issue that's, that's confronting is, is the number, it's a good problem to have, but the number of female cricket teams that, that we field is up to loss. That, again, is reflective of the growth in our, our community. We've gone from none to three, three, uh, female cricket teams. And that, they won the premiership last year in the, so we're very proud of them, but that's causing us a problem too. We can't have, it's a real problem now for our cricket club and that's something that we've raised with councillors' rec- planning officers that we're going to do something because we can't accommodate. Because there's two ovals, so they're going to, we're go- there's going to be two games of cricket going. If one's a female game, one's a male game, we struggle.
Thank you for that. Councillors, councillor Morgan, another question?
I have another question. Um, regarding the funding for this project, um, I note in the report that you've got down here, uh, council's contribution would be four hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred. Um, where do you propose the other million of that coming from?
My understanding, council, is that this is about council contribution to making a, uh, appetite. a, uh, application to the state government under the, whatever the name of the fund is now. And the other concern that we've got about that course is that our advice, quite short to write, that that program, which is, gives it's Community Infrastructure Fund, whatever...
Yep.
Has got a limited life. And it worries us that, you know, I think everybody's noticed that state government hasn't got, is not that flush with cash at the moment, that that will be another program that falls by the wayside. So if, if, if we don't take advantage of the opportunity now, it might not be there next year. And then, then we're looking at our right pay and funding the whole lot. So it's a small, a, a still, a truck, we're still a bit of money, we know that, but the investment now compared to what it might be next year or the year after, significantly less. So the opportunity, the time's now.
Yep. Councillors, any other questions? Nope. Thank you, Mr Quigley and team. No worries. Thanks. Councillors, we move on to speaker for item 10.2. Actually, can we get councillor Campbell back in the room? Thanks, Nathan. We'll just wait for councillor Campbell to return, and I better note that on... 10.2, 10.2, comfort. Thanks, councillor Campbell. That's all right. That's your catchum first. We're moving on to item 10.8, Community Engagement Update, Proposed Long-Term Lease for a Kalingi Telecommunications Tower. Our speaker is Mark Schmitz. Is Mark here tonight? Uh, joining us online. Sorry, I've got virtual, should have read that. Hi, Mark. Glad to have you on board. Uh, you've got three minutes. You'll hear a buzzer at 30 seconds and then a, a bell at time up. All yours, we're in your hands, Mark. And you're on mute, sorry. Classic, classic, uh, comment on Zoom. We'll start you three minutes again. Where are you going? No, still on, still on mute.
Any here now?
Now we've got you, Mark. All yours, floor's yours.
Uh, good evening. I am for the telecommunication education facility. It will enhance the mobile reception in most parts of Kalingi, which is desperately needed. We have no reception in parts of our property, which has caused issues on two serious occasions already. I had an accident in a farm vehicle and fractured my foot. I was unable to call for help and had to walk to an area with reception. A more serious accident could have had more serious consequences. Only yesterday, most of Kalingi lost power due to the storm and lightning strikes. A tree in one of our paddocks was hit by lightning and caught fire. We were unable to call triple zero. We had to first connect the generator, wait for internet connection to be able to use wifi calling. Luckily, a neighbour had seen the fire and was able to call triple zero. We already pay $139 per month for starting to have reliable internet connection to overcome the connection issues around our property, which is mainly around the house because it doesn't reach the payers. I believe the report on McQuirecom attached to your meeting agenda clearly shows that the arguments put forward by the people against the tower are without substance. We are happy to use mobile phones, microphones, wifi, and other models. We pass these towers all the time. Therefore, I don't see a reason to oppose new facilities. That was it.
Thank you, Mark. Just hang on two secs, and we'll see if there's any questions. Councillors, any questions for Mr Schmitz? Nope. Thank you, Mr Schmitz. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Always, thank you.
Councillors, that's our last member, uh, public speaker for tonight, so we move on to item seven, Notices of Motion. Sorry? Ah, sorry. I've jumped a spot. I do apologise, Mr CEO. We're going to go to, uh, questions on notice to the CEO. I'll let him have his three questions.
Uh, three community questions, Mr Mayor. So the first question was from Mr Gus Lamden. Uh, the question is, what is Latrobe City Council doing in regards to attracting businesses in the Moi Plaza and Moi CBD? Are you able to set up small business incentives for the region? So, uh, in response to that, so I can advise that council officers have engaged with businesses and representative industry groups in the Moi and Moi CBDs in order to develop several initiatives to support and attract businesses into the area. Uh, we've also been reviewing, officers have been reviewing initiatives across Australia that have been successfully implemented, including things like grant opportunities and specific place-based initiatives. So based on that engagement process and the review undertaken, council will soon be introducing a vacant CBD shop grant to assist in reducing shop vacancies, uh, place-based events developed by business representative groups, and CBD murals as some of the initiatives to create pride of place. Uh, so we've also been successful in attracting external funding for those programs, uh, to stimulate economic growth with particular focus on both those CBDs. So these programs will be released periodically throughout 2025 and continue to be delivered through 2026. Uh, we're also partnering with Advanced Mall and Latrobe City Chamber of Commerce, as well as local real estate agents implement these initiatives. And, uh, council officers have had an active relationship with the owners of Moi Plaza and will continue to support their intention to establish new businesses in the Moi Plaza, and we're also supporting their discussions around other developments in Moi as well. Uh, so we'll provide that response to Mr Lamston, Lamston, sorry. Uh, the second question is from Mark Schmitz. Uh, why doesn't the council hold more citizenship ceremonies? Uh, there is a large backlog already. There should be one in March and one in April. So in response to that, I can advise that council holds citizenship ceremonies at regular intervals, and additional conferees were included in the last ceremony, held on Australia Day in January, with two more ceremonies scheduled for February, uh, that were brought forward from March to support the end-of-year influx, as received by Ceremonies Victoria. Uh, further two ceremonies will also be held in May. Uh, ceremonies are planned based on waitlist as provided by Ceremonies Victoria and planned accordingly at times where there can be an influx. At times, and programming is adjusted accordingly to accommodate this where possible. Uh, while there's no ceremonies currently scheduled for April, this will be, uh, reassessed in March and programmed if required. So I think we've actually got one this, to this Friday, Mr Mayor, so looking forward to that.
To this Friday, I believe is correct.
Uh, and the third question is from, final question for tonight, from Linda Reid, and the question is, why was it decided not to have a listening post on Latrobe City Plan covering Churchill and surrounding towns in the municipality? In the interest of effective community engagement, how does counselling tend to address a large part of this community being unable to participate in this important process? So in response to that, I can advise that council engagement in relation to development of the 2025 to 29 council plan and community vision, uh, was undertaken in accordance with the engagement plan endorsed by council at December, at the December council meeting. Uh, that endorsed engagement plan included opportunity for all Latrobe City residents to provide feedback, including through Latrobe City Council Plan and Community Vision Survey, which is available for completion on council's Have Your Say page between 6th of January and 5th of February, uh, 2025. Survey hard copies are also made available to the community at Latrobe Leisure Centers, uh, Latrobe City Service Centers, sorry, including our leisure centers, libraries, early education centers, performing arts center, gallery, and service centers. Uh, flyers are also available at council facilities with a QR code for those wishing to complete the survey on their mobile phones. We did hold three pop-up community sessions, which were in Tarogon, Moi, and Moal, and two community panel workshops. So the survey and pop-ups were actively advertised through the following means: Latrobe City social media channels, Latrobe Valley Express, local radio, both Gold and TRFM, and media releases. So we'll also provide that response, uh, to Miss Reid. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Those are the three questions for tonight.
Thank you, Mr CEO. Glad we actually got them in and didn't jump straight past them. Councillors, we now move on to item seven on the agenda, which is Notices of Motion. Um, there are four items in this section. The first item is, the item is item 7.1, 2025-02, Single Use Plastic Water Bottles, commencing on page six of the agenda. Do I have a mover? Councillor Campbell?
Through you, Mr Mayor. Um, I'd like to move this motion.
Yep. Thank you, councillor Campbell. Do I have a second, a councillors? Councillor Pugsley, seconding?
Yes, through you. Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to second.
Okay. Do I have any opposition? Councillor Campbell, would you like to speak?
No.
You all right? Councillor Pugsley, would you like to speak?
Uh, thank you, through you, Mr Mayor. I would like to speak. Um, I would just like to, um, say that it has come to light that whilst we understand what previous councillors were trying to achieve, um, I believe that our systems have evolved and that we can recycle, um, single-use water bottles, uh, better than what we did previously. Um, I'd also like to, uh, state that, um, uh, I think that it has impacted our, um, our centres, uh, with, uh, the sale of water because it wasn't in a water bottle. Um, I myself have tried to drink water out of those water bottles, and, um, I had to end up using a glass. I was fortunate enough that I could have a glass. So I think that, um, it, whilst it was well-intentioned, it hasn't had the effect that it was meant to have. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Pugsley. Any, I've got councillor Howe, and then councillor Gibson Nutt, and then councillor Potter there with me, councillors. So it is councillor Howe, you're up, and then Gibson, and then councillor Potter. Yep.
There, thank you, through you, Mr Mayor. Um, 100% agree. We had, the original motion had these great, had great intentions, um, but it hasn't been as effective as we've liked, especially in the changes of the, uh, the recycling landscape. Uh, but I would like to acknowledge that our offices, uh, already rare with the issue and have scheduled a report presented to councillor in two weeks. But I do commend councillor Campbell for raising the matter tonight, to let all our community to know that we are on it and progress is being made behind the scenes. Um, so since the, the report is forthcoming, um, I've nothing more to add at this stage. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thanks, councillor Howe. Councillor Gibson?
Through you, Mr Mayor. Thank you. Um, I do note that, yes, it did come to council previously, and when you make a mistake, you fix it. And while the intention may have been good, uh, in practice, it wasn't the wisest way forward. And while there may be a report coming to a briefing, there isn't a report coming to an open council meeting until we've got this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gibson. Councillor Potter, you wish to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, through you. Um, as councillor Howe mentioned, there is that report coming through, uh, in March. And as councillor Pugsley also mentioned, that there is water actually still available for sale in all our venues, um, in the reusable aluminium bottles. Uh, so this motion actually presents us with a great opportunity to thoroughly consider how we can best balance accessibility and sustainability when it comes to the supply of single-use plastic bottles at our managed venues and also events. We also recognise the importance of reducing that plastic waste. As a council, we've taken significant steps towards sustainability, encouraging the use of reusable drink bottles and providing refilling, refilling stations like the ones that are just out here in the forecourt at GPAC. Um, and it's much easier for people to get that access at free, clean water, um, which is really great. So this is a really positive initiative, and I firmly believe that we should continue to promote these environmentally responsible choices. Have, we also need to be realistic. So we've all had those moments when we've left the house rushing to an event, uh, only to realise we've forgotten our reusable water bottle. Um, so, you know, having those single so, single-use water bottles in a responsible and balanced way. Um, so I'm really hoping this report will consider how we can ensure access for water while also continuing to encourage those reusable alternatives. And if we could prioritise biodegradable or recyclable alternatives, um, and improve the signage directing people to the refilling stations, uh, and work with vendors to offer reusable bottles at the events as well. So our, um, our goal should really be to strike that balance while supporting sustainability and recognising to be practical for the community as well.
Thank you, councillor Potter. Any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor Campbell, did you wish to close?
No, Mr Mayor.
Okay. Councillors, we've had speakers. I'm going to put it to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Pugsley, councillor Campbell and myself. I declare that motion carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. We move on to item 7.2, Recycle Bottles and Cans Scheme, commencing on page eight of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Uh, sorry, councillor Pugsley?
Uh, yes, I have a motion, um...
You're moving?
Yes, I'm moving. Thank you.
Councillor Pugsley, thanks for that. Do I have a second, a councillor Howe?
Through you, happy to, happy to second.
Happy to second. Do I have any opposition? No opposition. Councillor Pugsley, did you wish to speak?
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor, through you. Uh, yeah, I'd just like to speak about, um, how our recycling systems have evolved, um, and how I believe that, um, that, uh, offering, um, not-for-profit, uh, groups that deal with children, um, that it would be a valuable fundraising initiative for them. Um, I note that it is, uh, very difficult in this current climate for, um, for parents to be able to, uh, send their children on school camps or, um, Cub Scout, uh, camps or any other sporting, children-related sporting events. Um, and normal fundraising initiatives, um, are, are very, very, uh, difficult. So, um, I believe that this would be a great, uh, way to encourage, um, children, uh, to, to volunteer and, uh, also to help them with their fundraising.
Yep. Thank you, councillor Pugsley. Councillor Howe, did you wish to speak?
Uh, yes, please, just briefly through you, Mr Mayor. Um, I definitely think this is a worthwhile idea and it does warrant further exploration. Um, so I'm keen to see the report, particularly, uh, in regard to potential models for considering, um, some bu, any budget implications and any associated risks with implementing such a program. So looking forward to what the, uh, officers come back with. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Howe. Do I have another speaker for the motion? Councillor Morgan?
Um, I very much support this, and I think supporting not-for-profit groups is incredibly important. We have many wonderful not-for-profit groups, um, in the Latrobe City. Um, I do want to raise just a couple of points that I think we need to explore a bit further, um, specifically looking at council's liability when it comes to collecting bottles and, um, cans from events, especially if we're looking at specifically children's not-for-profit groups. Um, you know, are there going to be beer cans? Is there potentially alcohol in them? What does that look like? How does that work? Just to ensure we're looking after the safety and wellbeing of, um, young people. Um, but also, I think we need to look at how do we make this work if it's specifically for not-for-profit groups that work with children? Um, it may become difficult to, I guess... Yeah, it might be difficult to just work with those groups and what, what are the implications of that? Um, are we being discriminatory to other groups? Are we, you know, can the Lions Club, say, engage in this if they have a program that works, engages with children? What does that look like? But overall, I support this.
Thank you, councillor Morgan. Do I have a speaker against the motion? Do I have another speaker for the motion? Councillor Gibson?
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Uh, through you. I, I actually think this is a brilliant motion. Now, we went to the, the volunteer event recently, and all the groups are saying we can't get volunteers. Well, this is really smart because it's teaching the young how to volunteer. So, you know, further down the track, that we may not even need the volunteer event because we will have an influx of young who have learnt through this, the, the benefits of volunteering. So I think it's very smart. And the older volunteers, whether it be the Lions Club or the Rotary or the Basketball or whoever, they have other venues and opportunities that the young can't have. There are, they can have a dinner dance or, or different events like that that the young can't. So I, I think it's a very wise motion, and I'm happy to support it. So I think it's a very wise motion and I'm happy to support it, thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson, do I have any other councillors wish to speak? Councillor Pugsley, unfortunately there's no speaker against, so you can't close. So we'll put that straight to the vote councillors, all those in favour of the motion? Councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Pugsley, myself, those against and those abstaining. Councillor Campbell, you haven't voted.
Oh yes, I had my hand up, sorry.
Sorry, just keep it up until I, what was it up for? For, against or abstaining?
For.
For, thanks councillor Campbell, I declare the motion carried unanimously. Okay councillors, we move on to item 7.3. Seeing as I have put forward this motion, I'm going to ask the deputy mayor to take the chair so I can adjourn to the floor. I'll steal your notes if that's all right?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you councillors, the next item on the agenda is item 7.3. I note you councillor Harriman. Twenty twenty-five slash oh one, collection of the emergency services and volunteers fund. Councillors, I noted you councillor Harriman, are you moving this?
Moving the motion, madam mayor.
Madam deputy mayor?
Deputy, thank you. But that's okay, you get that. Do I have a second, councillor Pugsley? Do I have any opposition? No. Councillor Harriman, do you wish to speak?
Yes, thanks, madam mayor. First off, let me start by saying-
Madam deputy.
Deputy. Deputy mayor, sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry. Madam deputy mayor, this motion is not aimed against raising funds for the Emergent Services and Volunteers Fund. Quite the opposite, we're quite happy to see, and I'm quite happy to see this fund actually be collected but actually put to its proper use. What I'm against is what's happened with the landfill collection, which has been collected by councils at our cost, gone into general revenue and not one cent has gone back to help landfills or any other, any other issue related to recycling or anything to do with reducing emissions from landfill. And that's the fear with the same emergency service and volunteer fund. Number one, it's councils collecting it on behalf of the state government. It goes out on our rates notice, it is seen as a cost imposed by council when it is not. The state government has a state revenue office, which was set up to collect state taxes and state funds for the state government at their cost. By leaving this with council, what we are seeing is another burden placed on council, which then means it's placed on rate payers to collect this money of which we cannot be guaranteed that any of it will come back to this region. So what we're suggesting with this is that we write to the premier of Victoria and the minister of local government and this is being done in councils across Victoria. It's actually been taken up by the Municipal Association of Victoria, the peak body for councils. It's been taken up by Regional Cities Victoria, of which this council is a member. And I believe it's been taken up by Rural Cities Victoria as well. It is a huge impost on all councils to collect this money. It's something that we benefit not one bit from, but the state government is cutting costs by coming to us to do their collection and to take the hits that are going to flow when people get their rates notice and see the cost of some of these charges. Thank you, madam mayor. Deputy mayor?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Okay councillor Pugsley, you, oh. You wish to speak?
No, thank you.
No worries. Councillors, do I have anybody who wishes to speak to this motion? Against the motion? No. Sorry, Mr Mayor, you, it can't close because we've had no opposition and nobody else wishes to speak. Okay, so I'll call the item, all those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Harriman, councillor Barnes, councillor Pugsley, councillor Campbell and myself, I declare the motion carried unanimously.
Thank you councillors, we now move on to item 7.4, community safety in Latrobe City. I note you councillor Gibson? Do I have a, I take it you're moving councillor Gibson, or you have an alt?
I'm moving an alt, please.
Yep, this has been circulated to councillors, can we please get the alt put up on the screen? Councillors, I'll give you a chance to read through that. I think the alt is that on item two, we've added in advocate to the state government and police commissioner?
Just added police commissioner.
Added police commissioner, okay. Okay councillor Gibson, you're moving, do I have a second? Councillor Pugsley is seconding, do I have any opposition? Councillor Gibson, do you wish to speak?
Yes, please. Through you, Mr Mayor. The reason I bring this to council in the first place for their support is we all know we have an awful lot of crime going down in our municipality. Sadly, it's not getting any better. And it's not getting any better because we're having our police hours at different stations shut, closed or shortened the hours. So if you do a crime after hours in certain towns, well, for that to be addressed, the police have to come from at least twenty k's away. Now, I don't know about you, but I don't think any perpetrator is going to sit there and wait until the police actually get to the, the site. Now, and then the number of police that we actually have to attend to each and every call out, we don't have that. Now, there are issues in all of the CBDs, it's very noticeable or it's been highlighted greatly about mall wall, but it's not just mall wall. Yes, it's affecting the shops, but again, it's not just mall. Now, the reason why there was an original motion that actually was talking about us utilising our money is this didn't come about through our problem. And it's not us that actually put the police on the beat, it's the state governments. So that's why we're calling on the state government to fix the mess. We have our residents that are frightened. We have people being killed in their homes, that has never, ever happened like it is at the moment. And I don't want it to get worse, I want it to get better, but it won't get better unless we have the resources to actually adhere to that. That was the warning bell, right, got that, okay. The other part is addressing the inadequacies of the justice system. How many times do we have people who commit a felony and, sorry, and they're let out on bail? Or you get the younger ones who get a warning? It's just not good enough, so that's why I've called for this to occur, for the inadequacies with the justice system to be addressed and especially repeat offenders and the hours of operation. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson, councillor Pugsley, did you wish to speak?
Yes, thank you, through you, Mr Mayor, through the chair. I'd just like to follow up with what councillor Gibson was saying. I know of instances where the police have been needed and they have had to come from Toolegan to Moi. That's a thirty-minute wait, when you're in desperate need of a police officer and you're terrified, that is a desperate, that is a terrible, terrible wait. But it also has a flip side of when they're coming over to Moi to help us with our issues, they've been removed from if they needed into Toolegan. I also know of instances where police have had to come from Churchill, for goodness sakes. I don't know what the travel time there is, but to even have to wait more than ten minutes when you're in terrible need is just really distressing. That's all I've got to say, thank you.
Thank you councillor Pugsley, do I have a speaker for the motion? Speaker against the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillor Barnes? Sorry councillor Barnes, your mic's not on, if you could start again?
Sorry, Mr Mayor. I think that's one thing what does need addressing because there's a lot of different things happening late at night, early in mornings. People are asleep, they're coming into people's houses and taking what they want. I don't think that's good enough, so the police need to be on to it more. And when they're, and when they're actually caught, they need to be dealt with, not just put back on the streets so they come and do it again. That's it.
Thank you councillor Barnes, any other councillor wish to speak? We've had no speakers against, so you don't get to close councillor Gibson, so I'm going to put it to the vote councillors, all those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Pugsley, councillor Campbell, councillor Harriman, I declare that motion carried unanimously, thank you councillors. Councillor Gibson, I note you, we now move on to item eight, strategic items for decision. There are five items in this section, the first item is item eight point one, Latrobe City Council's federal election strategy commencing on page fifteen of the agenda. Councillor Gibson, I noted you.
Happy to move.
Councillor Gibson, you're moving, do I have a second? Councillor Morgan? Do I have any opposition? Councillor Gibson, did you wish to speak?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. As we all know, letters is one thing that we do and we advocate for our community. And while that is good, eyeballing is so much better. Now, it gives you more of a chance to actually get your, your message across to the government and to fight for your community. So I'm really happy to support this because, as you know, you and I and the CEO and one of our officers went to Canberra recently. And it was the eyeballing that makes a difference. The, we, we met with many, many different MPs. We met with Darren Chester, we were supposed to meet with David Littleproud, but our flight was delayed by two hours, thank you councillors. So we missed that. We met with Senator Mackenzie, we met with, oh now I always get his name wrong, sorry if I do. Rapid, Rapid Charlie? That's it, that one, sorry. Tim Eas, the PM's minister, Peter Dutton, Russell Broadbent, Ted O'Brien. Now, in those meetings, they were very, very constructive and normally you get twenty minutes tops. We weren't, we were getting three quarters of an hour. So, you know, we had a really good hearing on our needs because out of all of Australia, we are the worst hit in Australia with what's coming. So it was imperative that we go up and eyeball them to say, what are you going to do for us? Now, we spoke on many different subjects. The Latrobe new energy future, we have been dealing with the Hesk project, which actually would be the first, oh, I could be stood corrected there, but Blue Hydrogen project, which actually gives us the add blue, is add blue? Already? Sorry, add blue. It also gives you fertiliser and it can be neutral, it can be CO2 neutral by utilising carbon capture, storage and utilisation, which is proven across the world. We also spoke to them about the Victorian aerospace technology project, which is advanced aerom manufacturing and my time is up.
Thank you councillor Gibson, I can give you ten more seconds to wind it up.
Well, that's never going to do it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson, councillor Pugsley, did you wish to speak? Oh sorry councillor Morgan, sorry. I'm looking at the wrong page from the last notice of motion, and most, most, and last item. Councillor Morgan, would you like to speak?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. Through you, I want to acknowledge the thorough work that's been done by our officers in creating a really strong strategy that I think is placing us very well a very proactive approach to the upcoming federal election. As the previous speaker noted, we have a lot of things coming up for us as a region that all need funding. So I think this is a really solid way of us getting what we need at the table, front and centre and hopefully we get some good outcomes out of it. So thank you again to the officers and very happily support this.
Thank you councillor Morgan, do I have another speaker for the motion? Speaker against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak? Okay councillors, we've had speakers, so we're going to put it to the vote, all those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Pugsley, councillor Campbell and myself, I declare the motion carried unanimously. We move on to item eight point two, I note you councillor Gibson? Sale process update fifty-nine to ninety-one, Phillips Parade Churchill Hazelwood House, commencing on page fifty-five of the agenda. Councillor Gibson, I noted you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to move a procedural motion, please.
Certainly, do we have a second? Councillor Howe, seconding the procedural motion? Yep, is the procedural motion, we could grab that up there? Sorry, the sun's right in Caitlin's eye, somebody needs to pull a blind down for her.
It is.
That is horrendous. For those of you playing at home, we have two officers trying to read a computer and the sun is setting directly into their eyes. We'll wait for Caitlin to get the procedural motion up. Oh, well done, thank you gentlemen, thank you gentlemen. Chivalry is not dead.
That's nice.
Yep, we've got it up, thank you. And thank you to the gentleman that stood up to block the sun, appreciate it.
No, that's not it.
That's not it, no. Procedural? It's a new motion?
It's not that one. That's to go into. The procedural motion is for it to go into the confidential item being financed.
Okay, you're moving councillor Gibson, councillor Howe, you're seconding, do we have any opposition? There's no opposition, did you wish to speak councillor Gibson? Procedural?
Be it procedural, I don't believe I am able to.
No, you're not, and said, but you have to be offered. Seeing as there's been no speakers and no opposition, I declare the motion carried unanimously and item eight point two will be placed into confidential. We move on to item eight point three, I note you councillor Gibson? Bear with me, item eight point three, review process for governance rules commencing on page sixty of the agenda. Councillor Gibson, I noted you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Through you, there is a, we're just waiting for them to catch up.
Teams just catching up. We'll just put this on hold for a minute, let-
That was the motion.
Ah, that was the motion, yep. Yep. So we're on to eight point three, you have-
I'm moving an alt.
An alt, if the officers could bring the alt up? Yep, that has been circulated to councillors, but if you want to take a minute to read that councillors, just to familiarise yourself with it again. Okay councillor Gibson, you're moving?
Yes, please.
Councillors, do I have a second? Councillor Pugsley, councillors, do I have any opposition? Councillor Potter's opposing. Councillor Gibson, did you wish to speak?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor, through you. I'm moving this motion for this to go out to the community for a four-week consultation. For those who've been on council at the previous council, know that there, when the governance rules went out to the public, there was quite a lot of feedback and the feedback was the concern about the notices of motions and the petitions. And the feedback was the concern about the notices of motions and the petitions. So it, in my opinion, we didn't listen as well as we could have. And I believe we need to go back out to the community and say, right, okay, did you think we got it wrong by putting all of these restrictions in for notices of motion? Or not? Do you believe that we have got it right with the petitions or not? So that's what this is about. Now, yourself and myself had to attend some compulsory training for mayor and deputy training that was Victorian-wide. And they told us that we shouldn't be doing, we shouldn't have these notice of motion rules in that we have. So this is training that the state government has put in place and they're telling us we shouldn't have it in there, let alone the community who were telling us, no, don't have it in there. As much as we like our CEO, lovely man, by the rules that we have, he decides what a councillor who is his boss does and doesn't put forward. And normally what we put forward is what the community are coming and saying to us. Now, councillors are voted in or out by the community. Our CEO, as I say, lovely person, he's not. This stops us being directly accountable too much. Now, the other part of this is about petitions. Now, we are the only council in Gippsland who makes the people, our bosses, go through us to do a petition. Why is that? Why are we making it so hard for our community to come and tell us what they think? Yes, you have to have guidelines. I don't have a problem of that, not at all. But if our community wish to come and speak to us or put a petition in, we need to listen and we make it as easy as possible for them to do that for us. And I think I've.
I was just about to say, I think you've done your three minutes, Councillor Gibson.
But thank you very much.
I think the bribe you paid to our comms team down there is paid off with chocolates, paid off perfectly. Councillor Pugsley, you seconded. Did you wish to speak or reserve?
Thank you, I wish to reserve at this time.
Councillor Potter, you opposed. Did you wish to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor, through you. I really want to talk about this today because it's not that I don't support strong governance or community consultation. I think they're absolutely vital part of what we do every day. But it's the timing of this proposal that I feel is a little bit flawed. So we know the local government in Victoria, the LGV, is actually putting together model governance rules that we have been told several times will be released in December this year. So I feel like that we maybe, if we go out to consultation now, we're going to be going out to consultation once again in December to look at the model rules. Now, although they're not mandatory, they are going to be what is best practice. And we want to be implementing also what is best practice. So at the moment, we don't know what that's going to look like. So I'm really encouraging, rather than going and changing our governance rules now and then changing them again in December, that we engage with LGV, make sure that we're actively part of their consultation around what is best practice? What does that look like? And what's that going to look like when it goes out to all the different councils in December? So I just want to be really efficient and avoid going back to our community too many times with the same questions over and over again. So for that reason, I really urge that we wait. We engage with the process so that we have a say in what those best practice rules are going to look like. And then we go out and consult with our community around that. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Potter. Do I have a speaker for the motion? Speaker against the motion, Councillor Howe.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and through you. We've had these governance rules in place since October two thousand and twenty-three, and I've found them working extremely well. So I look at the proposed changes and I'll start with the notice of motion. First one is that the CEO will arrange an officer to comment to accompany the agenda right, which includes setting out councillor justification and background. I think when I'm making a decision, that will be important to me. If I can get this on a, on the Thursday night, it gives me three or four days to read it. If I've got any questions, I can contact the councillor and I can have anything clarified. If the notice motion's passed, will there be budget implications? Absolutely want to know that. If we pass this notice motion, what's it gonna cost? You know, what are the budget implications? Very important, I think. Will it impact on internal resources? Same thing. Is it, if it's gonna take up staff time, how much time? Absolutely crucial information I think, I need to know when I'm deciding on voting on a notice of motion. Does it relate to the council plan and any relevant council policies? Very important again. And are we also doing work in this space by officers and committees? Helpful information that will help fill the whole picture when we're, when we're making a decision. So I think when you look at that, I don't know how you want to take that out. It's, I think, to me, it's necessary information and it gives me the time to review, understand, and it enables me to make an informed decision on the night. I think this is a good governance and I think in the long run, it's for the best outcome for our community. I'll jump quickly on to the petition part of it. First ones, we're gonna take out is the not exceeding two hundred and fifty words. I'm not fussed overly about that one. I think it's good to have it in there, so it's concise and it's a good petition. People know they can read two hundred and fifty words or less and know exactly what it is. But to be submitted through an approved councilly petition facility, absolutely crucial. We know we can protect the people that sign the petition. We're in control of their data, we're not selling it, we know it's a secure, it's a secure computer program or whatever. And if they come and work with our officers, it's gonna be right from day one. It's, how many times have we had a petition come to us? And because it doesn't meet our guidelines, we've had to reject it. We've had to help sit down with them, start the petition again, and then they have to go and get the signatures again. This way, from day one, it's approved and they can start getting the petitions. I understand that it might take three or four days and I'm more than happy to have our officers work on that so we can increase the turnaround time, so we can get it up within one or two days, if that's what we can do. And just touching on Councillor Potter's things, this went out to community consultation in two thousand and twenty-three. If it goes out again now, it will go out again later in the year, so that's three times in two years. I think that we possibly should, should wait and see what the model governance rules looks like. That'll do. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Well timed, Councillor Howe, well done. Councillors, do I have a speaker for the motion? Do I have a speaker against the motion? Do I have any councillor wishing to speak? Councillor Gibson, did you wish to close? Oh, sorry. Ah, reserved. Councillor Pugley, you're reserved, sorry.
Yes, thank you, through you, Mr Mayor. I would just like to touch base with what Councillor Potter did say, how there is the model governance rules coming out. But I believe by putting this out now and listening to what our residents want, it gives us the chance to best advocate of how the model governance rules do come into effect.
Yep, thank you, Councillor Pugsley. Councillor Gibson, did you wish to close?
Yes, please. I haven't started yet. Hang on, you lot.
You have an extra minute before, so you only get two minutes now, Councillor Gibson.
Okay, thank you, Mr Mayor. All right. While it's stated it's supposed to be December that the model rules are coming out from the government, I would love to have complete faith that that's the case. We've been told that they have been coming out for a long time, same as local government acts. It was supposed to be put through by a certain date and that never happened. As I say, I would love to be as certain that that's the case, but in practice, that never happens. So in the meantime, we're waiting, waiting, waiting for something that, when will it occur? We don't know. We're told, but what we're told isn't always true. Now, a few things. All right, the concern about having the information in there. I would suggest that if any motion was put up and it was relating to our budgets, we didn't know how that would occur and all the other parts in it, it wouldn't pass muster, it wouldn't pass the pub test and it wouldn't pass round this table. So I believe that councillors actually know what they're doing, or should know what they're doing, and more so than going through our CEO like it is at the moment. As I say, no offence to our CEO. And why are we being told in government training not to have it? Why are we having that? So, you know, I listened to my fellow councillors and the concerns, but we were being told by the legal experts, no. So how does that work? As for the petitions, why are we the only council in Gippsland who makes it so hard? You have to go through our portals, our way of petitions. I understand about the, making sure the wording's right, I do not have a problem like that. But if they, if the public wish to use any form at all to give us the message of what they're wanting, feeling, whatever they want to say to us, we need to make it as easy as possible. And it will be up to the petitioner to inform the people how to do it and what to do. So I would encourage my councillors to vote for my alt.
Thank you, Councillor Gibson. Councillors, we've had speakers, we'll put it to the vote, all those in favour? Councillor Gibson, Councillor Barnes, Councillor Pugsley, Councillor Campbell and myself, those opposed? Councillor Potter, Councillor Morgan and Councillor Howe, declare the motion carried. Thank you, councillors, we move on to item 8.4, review of the public transparency policy, commencing on page seventy-eight of the agenda. Do I have a mover? Councillor Morgan, do I have a seconda? Councillor Howe, do I have any opposition? Councillor Morgan, would you like to speak?
Briefly, I think this is just a very sensible policy that's been put up and well done again to the officers for putting in all the work. I'm very happy to move this.
Thank you, Councillor Morgan. Councillor Howe, did you wish to speak?
Oh, yeah, just very briefly. This was due to be renewed late last year, but because of the council elections, they did push it back to this year. And we do have a transparency, a model transparency policy from the Victorian government getting rolled out to all councils later this year. So what our officers have done, if they've checked it, it ticks all the boxes now. When the new one comes out in three or four months, they'll do a more in-depth review and it'll come back to council. What this also does, the report also acknowledges the potential overlap with the transparency hub, which the officers are doing a report on, and that should be coming back to us in the next month. So just for the community that are interested in the, in the work on the transparency hub. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Howe. Do I have a speaker for the motion? Speaker against the motion, any councillor wishing to speak? No, therefore we will go, sorry, Councillor Morgan, you don't get to close. No opposition, we'll go to the vote, all those in favour? Councillor Potter, Councillor Morgan, Councillor Howe? Sorry, bear with me. Councillor Gibson, Councillor Barnes, Councillor Pugsley, Councillor Campbell and myself, I declare the motion carried unanimously. We move on to item 8.5. I note you, sorry, I note you, Councillor Gibson, bear with me, bless you. Item 8.5, the mall CBD safety, commencing on page eighty-two of the agenda. Councillor Gibson, I noted you.
I would like to move an alt, please.
An alt, yep. And that alt has been circulated to councillors, I'll give you a chance to read through it, councillors. That is coming up on screen, there's the alt there, I'll give you five minutes or a couple of minutes to read it. Councillors, Councillor Morgan?
Sorry, Mr Mayor, just through you, seeking clarification, is the only change to the alternate, the removal of points one, one A B, yes?
Yep, point one's been removed, yep. All right, councillors, do I have a seconda? Councillor Pugsley? Do I have any opposition? Do I have any councillor, Councillor Gibson, did you wish to speak?
Just quickly, please, Mr Mayor. There was a councillor, oh, sorry, an officer's recommendation previously. And I took out the first line or the first paragraph because we didn't set this problem up in the first place. So why should our ratepayers be paying for it? So that's why I took that out. Yes, as we know, there is a huge issue with the CBD and I have spoken a bit previously tonight on issues with policing and CBDs. Now, as we know, there, or as some might know, we have a real issue of people coming down from Frankston and Dandenong on the train each day with their passion pops, the two dollar fifty passion pops, and congregating in the mall CBD and sometimes the mobile CBD. And it's a real issue. It is concerning all the locals, the shopkeepers, and it is just not acceptable. It really isn't acceptable. So we have to look at what we do for that. Now, some of the issues that were being looked at to actually address it is something that's done worldwide. And it's about the classical music in the CBDs. Now, as we know, anyone who has drug issues hates it. So the people who, not all are in that boat, but there is some that are in that boat that are congregating around the railway station and the CBD, they won't. They will go because it's proven across the world that they will go. That's just one measure. Also, cleaning up our CBD. Now, moving the street furniture from outside Manny's Market, I did have a suggestion where it could go. But putting it out the front there, sadly, a lot of these people are congregating there and making it hell for the locals to actually go and shop in Manny's Market for one of the places, the shoe shop, which I sort of might know a bit. They're having troubles. It's across the board. So we're looking at what can be done to be put in place. So the great programme that Frankston and Dandenong had of moving the undesirables along, we are in the same boat with the success. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Gibson. Councillor Pugsley, you seconded. Did you wish to speak or reserve?
I wish to reserve at this time, thank you.
I shall endeavour to remember that this time. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Councillor Potter?
Thank you, Mr Potter. Thank you, Mr Mayor, through you. This is a really important initiative and directly impacts the safety and wellbeing and the future of our community. And the initiative really aims to build a safer and more connected mall and possibly mobile, that's where that's also happening as well. But I think we need this money allocated to this programme. The Community Connectors Programme is absolutely inspirational and it's been such a huge success. The results that came out when it was first introduced by metro trains in urban areas, where people act as liaisons, they build trust with the local residents and services. They're addressing all the issues from mental health. they're addressing all the issues from mental health to safety concerns, and they're creating those straight pathways into support services. And it's really helped to reduce the crime, enhance social inclusion and improve the mental wellbeing of the individuals they've been interacting with. So advocating for this programme in Moorewall, we're not only supporting the health of the individuals, but we're also supporting a stronger, more cohesive society, one where everybody is able to feel safe and feel supported in that. So I think it's really important that, you know, this is more than just allocating funds, it's about fostering a safe and a welcoming environment where the community can grow and thrive. And by investing in projects that promote connection, safety and support, we're building the foundations to a brighter and more secure mall. So let's work together and make Moorewall a place where every resident feels valued and feels safe and connected. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Potter. Do I have a speaker for the motion? Speaker against the motion? Councillor Morgan?
Echoing councillor Potter's points, I completely support this motion, but I do believe we need to put funding towards this. I'm a proud Moorewell resident myself, and I think Moorewell is a really wonderful, kind, giving community, and we are facing some unfortunate issues. I think the Community Connecters Programme that is presented in this report is a powerful tool to help build that social cohesion, to build a sense of trust and safety back in the Moorewell community, and to make everyone who lives there and works there feel proud to be in Moorewell. I think it's a very cohesive way to look at these issues that are very, very, very complex. There's not one solution, but I think we need to ensure there is funding available. I understand that we didn't create this problem, but I feel it's our duty as a council to put something towards it, because this is affecting our residents, it's affecting ratepayers, it is a terrible situation to have to deal with, and we need to take a proactive approach to remedying it. So I don't support this alternate motion because I think we need to go back to the original motion and ensure that there is funding there available, because Moorewell matters, Moorewell deserves that funding, Moorewell deserves to be recognised and to get the support. Yes, we can advocate for more funding, but we need to put something in to show our community, my community, that we matter and we're not going to be ignored and we're not going to be okay with letting these things happen in Moorewell. So, thank you.
Thank you councillor Morgan. Do I have a speaker for the motion? Speaker against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak? Councillor Pugsley, you reserved, oh sorry councillor Campbell, you wish to speak?
I've worked in the CBD of Moorewall for many years. The problem has been there for a very long time, and there's been numerous different ways to try and solve this problem, and they've never been solved. And there's issues being excavated there that this amount of money won't help until you get, you know, disperse some of the issues. I can't, I don't want a single amount, but being held up and threatened with a knife, how much money would that, how much money would, it would, this £150,000, what would that money do to stop that from happening? Because that young man had just got out of jail for doing the same thing. So these people need help, and I think they need help at all different levels, not just local government, I think the state government needs to step in a lot. I think we've got the Health Assembly, we've got so many great things, Quantum, you know, if we can all get together, but I just don't know, how is this £150,000 and this £60,000 going to be utilised? You know, we need to know how that's going to be utilised before we actually put that money towards it. That's all I'd like to say, thank you.
Thank you councillor Barnes.
Mr Mayor, I've been talking to a lot of the shop owners in Moorewall, in the CBD, and they're not happy with how it's being controlled. A lot of them have got about two years left on their lease, and there's a lot of shops along there. If they don't do something about it soon, they'll be all empty. So we need to work out how we're going to go about it and what we've got to do to fix the problem. And we need to do it fairly quick, otherwise there'll be a lot of empty shops.
Yep, thank you councillor Barnes. Do I have any others? Councillor Howe?
Yeah, I wasn't going to speak, but I might throw my two bob's worth in. It is obviously an issue there, and as council, it's not our role to fix it, but we've got a role involved in there somewhere to try and to help solve the problem. But I think that if we go to the state government, hat in hand, it's going to be a lot easier if we're saying, we're putting these funds in, but we need your help as well. I think we're going to have a lot better chance of securing funding if we're putting something in there as well. So I support the original most, original recommendation of the officers, that we should allocate some of their own funds, sort of put the money where our mouth is, I suppose. Thanks.
Thanks councillor Howe. I think everybody's spoken. Councillor Pugsley, you reserved?
Thank you, and through you, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to say that before we throw a lot of money at it that could be utilised somewhere else, and I really think that the £150,000 is a lot of money in today's society. I think that we really need to explore other ways of classical music, and I myself have used the classical music, and believe me, the 15 to, I think it is the 30 or 35-year-old can't stand classical music. There have been scientific studies done on it, they just can't. The occasional one that can't, that will withstand it, Barry Manilow, but you've got to be really, really ready to leave the building yourself. I think that part of this is that we've got limited police powers, we've talked about that before, but I think that we need to, instead of using money that can be used somewhere else, we need to make sure that we explore the avenues that will cost less. If it doesn't work, we can revisit it. But if we throw the money at it, the £150,000, that's somebody else that's going to miss out on that money. So let's try and explore it first. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pugsley. We've had speakers against councillor Gibson, did you wish to close?
Yes please, Mr Mayor. I agree, more deserves better, don't have an issue with that. Throwing more money because we already have thrown money at this, we've already had our people on the beat with the police, we have been spending ratepayers' money to try and address this. It's not going to cut it like it is. It would help if the state government were, essentially wasn't cost shifting, because essentially that's what it is, we had to pay for their mistakes. We all know that there is an influx of people that have been brought down from other places to take up residence in Moorewall. Now, some of these people have real serious issues, and we do not have the resources or the services to help them. So there is quite a few issues that need to be addressed. We cannot do that. That is the state government, it is our role to actually say to the state government, you have created this mess on all these fronts, whether it's the policing, whether it's the cost shifting, whether it's sending the clientele down here to live here. There is so many issues here that we cannot do, it is our state government that have to do. So that's why I've taken the money out of here, because it's not that we haven't paid money in the past, but it's now time for the state government to step up and fix the problem that they have created, instead of us, the ratepayers, paying again for other people's mistakes. So I would really encourage my fellow councillors to support this, because we've also heard other people tonight saying, well, if you've got spare money, we want it for issues that are not state government issues that have been created. So I would encourage everybody to support it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillors, we've had speakers for and against the motion, so we're going to put it to the vote. All those for? Councillor Gibson, Penderwick would help, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Pugsley, councillor Campbell and myself. Those against? Councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, I declare the motion, the alternate motion carried. Right councillors, we move on to next item on the agenda, which is item nine, statutory planning. I noted you councillor Gibson. There are three items in this section, the first item 9.1, consideration of submissions to amendment C143, public acquisition overlay commencing on page 112 of the agenda. Councillor Gibson, I noted you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to do a procedural motion.
Procedural?
Well, is it procedural?
As you do. Yeah, that's it. What is the motion councillor Gibson?
It's to go to the planning panel. No, I'm just supporting, sorry. I'm supporting the, yes, I'm supporting the officer's recommendation because it, because, oh no, I can't debate.
Sorry, it's a, we've got, what are you, you're moving?
Want to second it?
You're moving, hang on councillor Gibson, you're moving a procedural motion to do what?
No, I'm actually, sorry, scrub that, I'm moving the actual recommendation.
Okay.
I'm happy to second.
Councillor Howe seconding councillor Gibson, moving?
Yeah, I'm happy to.
To second it?
Yeah, I'll second the.
Done, all right.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I have any opposition? Councillor Gibson, did you wish to speak?
Just really quickly, for those who don't know, when there's a planning issue and you cannot, you cannot resolve all the objections, it is, well, this is where I got stuffed up, it actually goes to, it's sort of procedural, it goes to a planning panel, so that's what this is. There's been objections, they can't be resolved, so it goes automatically to a planning panel. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillor Howe, did you wish to speak?
I'll just, I'll just add a little bit to the story. So our officers have identified that there's approximately 23 properties that we need to acquire over the next 10 years to put in provisions to enable further residential subdivisions. So overall, they received seven submissions, two objections, which we haven't been able to change. So as to outstanding objections, we will call on the Minister of Planning to appoint an independent planning process panel. So really what all that is, it's the next step in the process to keep the process rolling along. So I'm happy to second this one. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Howe. Do I have any opposition? Do I have a speaker for the motion? Do I have any councillor wish to speak? We've had no opposition, therefore there can be no close, therefore we go straight to the vote. Councillors, all those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Pugsley, councillor Campbell and myself, I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors, we now move on to item 9.2. Councillor Barnes, you have a conflict of interest, if you'd like to leave the room. Okay councillors, item 9.2, planning permit application 2024/17, use of land for domestic animal husbandry, five dogs, commencing on page 182 of the agenda. Do I have a mover? Councillor Pugsley, you're moving? Do I have a seconder? Councillor Howe?
Through you, have you seconded, Mr Mayor?
Excellent. Do I have any opposition? Councillor Howe, do you wish to speak?
I'll have a minute first.
Oh sorry, councillor, councillor Pugsley, I've got my notes on the wrong page, do you wish to speak?
Uh, no, I think everything speaks for itself, Mr Mayor.
Yep, councillor Howe, did you wish to speak?
Oh yeah, just very briefly, we did have six objections to this planning permit, five from nearby residents all citing concerns about barking dogs and impact on their amenity. There were 12 submissions to support, but I don't think that any of them were actually living around the actual site, so they're not, they don't have to live with the consequences of tonight's decision. So I do support the officer's recommendations, despite the, it is a large block size, but it is in a residential area and housing of so many dogs, particularly large dogs, I think is inappropriate, and it definitely have a negative impact on the neighbour's amenity and their wellbeing. So happy to support the recommendation in this report, thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thanks councillor Howe. Do I have a speaker for the motion? Councillor Gibson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And I'll note this is a very emotive decision that is before us. As a person who loves their dog, I can understand how you don't want to let them go, I understand that, but I also understand about barking dogs, I get that too. If in 12 months, two years, it is seen that all the issues are raised, that there's no barking, that the neighbours, it's in harmony, harmony with one another, it might be a different issue. But at the time that we have before us, there are huge issues that I don't believe have been addressed, and I'm concerned that they will be addressed, and I don't want to put that on to the people living there, because we actually have a dog, a couple of dogs up from us, that barks their little heads off. So I do understand that, and, you know, these issues need to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Okay councillors, we've had no speakers against, so there'll be no closing, we'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Pugsley, councillor Campbell and myself, I declare the motion carried. Thank you councillors. The next item is item 9.3, where I have a conflict of interest, so I should be asking the deputy mayor to take the chair, and while councillor Barnes comes in, I'll let out. Madam Deputy Mayor might have suggested we've been at it for two hours after this one, that's what I was going to suggest.
Okay, you can do now if you want. Okay councillors, we have item 9.3 in front of us. It's an update of progress of the strategic work for 5483 and 5495 Princess Highway, Terelgan, known as Holly, I note you councillor Pugsley, known as Hollydale. Councillor Pugsley, I noted you.
Yes, Madam Deputy Mayor, through you. I'd like to move an alt please, that has been previously circulated.
Okay, is that the alt up on the screen that you moved?
Yes it is, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor.
No worries. Thank you councillor Pugsley. Do I have a seconder for that motion please? Councillor Barnes? Okay, do I have any opposition please? Nope. Okay councillor Pugsley, do you wish to speak to the motion?
Yes, through you deputy, Madam Deputy Mayor. That's a mouthful, isn't it? I'd just like to speak to the motion, that it is a small change that I've made.
that I've made in point one. Place is on hold for a period of six months or sooner if a proponent-led application is lodged. As we, I do acknowledge that we do want to have this process done as quickly as possible for the best interests of everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Pugsley. Councillor Barnes, do you wish to speak or reserve?
Mr Deputy Mayor, I would like to put a reserve on that, thanks.
Not a problem. Do I have a speaker for the motion? Against the motion? Anybody else wish to speak? Nope. Right, right back at you, councillor Barnes. Do you wish to speak?
That's, that's everything, thanks.
No worries. Thank you. Sorry. As there were no speakers in opposition, councillor Pugsley, you cannot close, so I'll put the motion to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Barnes, councillor Pugsley, councillor Campbell and myself, I declare the motion carried unanimously. Now, for, yeah, well, we're going to have a ten, ten minute break, but I'd better let him call that. Just a tad? There you go.
Thanks. Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Councillors, we've been at it for two hours. I think it might be time to take a ten minute break, just for a comfort break, and we'll resume the meeting at eight fifteen. Thank you. Yep, three point four, room three and four, yep. Yep. Do I need the motion to do that, don't I? Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Howe, seconded councillor Morgan, do I have any opposition? Put that to the, any councillor wish to speak? Carried unanimously. Done, eight fifteen.
Bearing with us, we now move. Okay, we'll just wait for that short break to come off. Twenty seconds, was it? All right, welcome back to those on the live stream and welcome back councillors. We now move on to item 10, which is corporate items for decision. There are eight items in this section, the first item is 8.1. 2024/2025 mid-year budget review commencing on page 13. Sorry? 10.1, oh sorry, I've got in my notes it at 8.1, we'll make that 10.1 because we're not starting again. 10.1, mid-year budget review, do I have a mover? Councillor Howe, moving, do I have a seconder? Councillor Morgan, seconding, do I have any opposition? Councillor Howe, would you like to speak?
Ah yes, thanks through you, Mr Chair. The good news is, if you look at the report, we've got a projected 2.8 million surplus for the 24-25 financial year. Majority of the surplus, 2.3, is due to the postponement of two road rehabilitation projects that upon closer inspection showed that full rehabilitation is unnecessary. Officers have identified two required projects. One's the UV disinfectant units at the leisure centres and the CO2 bulk tanks at leisure centres and outdoor pools. So both of these are priorities to the officers because of our health and safety reasons. So I'm happy to support them. As per our council resolution, 50% or 900,000 will go to the end of the year surplus and the remaining 1.5 million will go to capital works reserved for renewal projects in the 25-26 budget. So if you look at the risk assessment, it shows low risk for compliance, service delivery and financial risks. So I'm happy to move this motion, thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Howe. Councillor Morgan, did you wish to speak or reserve?
Reserve.
Reserve, no worries. Councillors, do I have any speakers for the motion? Any speakers against the motion? Any councillors wish to speak? Councillor Morgan, we're back to you.
I'll pass on that, thank you, Mr Mayor.
No, thank you, Councillor Morgan. And because we've had no opposition, Councillor Howe, you don't get to close. So we'll put that straight to the vote, all those in favour. Councillor Potter, Councillor Morgan, Councillor Howe, Councillor Gibson, Councillor Barnes, Councillor Pugsley, Councillor Campbell and myself, I declared that motion carried unanimously. Okay, councillors, we move on to item 10.2, Councillor Campbell, you've declared a conflict of interest. Just wait for Councillor Campbell, who has a conflict of interest, to leave the room. And be out of view. Perfect. Councillors, 10.2, Regional Community Sports Infrastructure Fund, round two, commencing on page 223 of the agenda. Do I have a mover? Councillor Morgan is moving, do I have a seconder? Councillor Potter is seconding, do I have any opposition? Councillor Morgan, would you like to speak?
I would like to just say, although everything that I think the community has raised, especially tonight, is not funded in this, I think what we have funded, especially the lift installation at Ronald Reserve in Morewell, it's important stuff, it's about making our community sports more accessible and ensuring that we have the ability to include everyone. And I think going forward, we need to ensure that continues to happen, especially for women and girls in sport. But for now, I'm very happy to move this and see the pavilion lift and upgrades at Ronald Reserve come to life and see the Rec Reserve master plans come to fruition too.
Thank you, Councillor Morgan. Councillor Potter, did you wish to speak?
Yes, Mr Mayor, thank you, through you. I'd just like to thank the speakers that came along tonight and acknowledge the 10 years of advocacy at the Rec Reserve and what they've done to emphasise the urgent need for the funding to deliver Yonar Recreation Reserve Women and Girls Change Rooms. While the importance of these facilities for female athletes cannot be overstated, the real challenge we face is securing the necessary financial support to make this project a reality. So Yonar Rec Reserve is a vital hub for our netball tennis communities. However, the lack of dedicated change rooms for women and girls continues to be a significant barrier to participation. Sport's about inclusivity and empowerment and fostering that sense of belonging. Yet without proper facilities, we risk discouraging female athletes from fully engaging. So as a council, we recognise this issue in many of our community facilities and we remain committed to delivering a solution. So while this project is one of our highest priorities, the lack of funding means a significant challenge. So council officers will continue to seek funding opportunities, support this project. And the Regional Community Sports Infrastructure Fund is one example of a funder streaming that does regularly come available at the moment. But in the future, this fund could provide a pathway for securing that necessary investment to move the project forward. So given the priority status of this project, I asked the CEO through Mr Mayor whether necessary funding allocations could be considered as part of the 25-26 council budget and a budget allocation that could serve as council's contribution to leverage that external funding. You know, to really be able to strengthen and the ability to secure external financial support to ensure that these are delivered on time and meet the community's need going into the future. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Potter. Do I have a speaker for the motion? Speaker against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak? All right, councillors, we've had speakers, so I'll now put it to the vote, all those in favour of the motion. Councillor Potter, Councillor Morgan, Councillor Howe, Councillor Barnes, Councillor Pugsley, all those against and those abstaining. Councillor Gibson and myself, I declare the motion carried. Thank you, councillors, could we bring Councillor Campbell back into the room, please? Glasses. All right, councillors, we'll move on to item 10.3, Chief Executive Officer Employment Matters Committee, Extension of Independent Member and Chair Appointment commencing on page 266 of the agenda. Councillors, do I have a motion? Councillor Howe is moving.
Happy to move, thanks, Mr Mayor.
Do I have a seconder? Councillor Morgan is seconding, do I have any opposition? No, Councillor Howe, would you like to speak?
Absolutely, thanks through you, Mr Chair. I had the pleasure of working with Mr Spiller during my mayoral term last year. And I said on the CEO Employment Matters Committee, and I highly recommend him. He possesses the knowledge, the skill and the qualifications to effectively manage the committee. He was always prepared, ensured we had sufficient information to make informed decisions and he provided sound advice. He was also readily available outside meetings for any questions or conversations. So I'm very happy to move this motion, thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Howe. Councillor Morgan, would you like to speak?
I'll reserve the moment.
Reserve, no worries. Do I have any speakers for the motion? Any speakers against the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillor Morgan, we're back to you.
I'll pass on that, thank you.
No worries, thank you, Councillor Morgan. Councillor Howe, you miss out again, there's no opposition. Councillors, we've had speakers, so I'll put it to the vote, all those in favour. Councillor Potter, Councillor Morgan, Councillor Howe, Councillor Gibson, Councillor Barnes, Councillor Pugsley, Councillor Campbell and myself, I declare that motion carried unanimously. Councillors, we move on to item 10.4, I note you, Councillor Pugsley. Item 10.4, Request to Execute Latrobe City Trust Deed, commencing on page 270 of the agenda. Councillor Pugsley, I noted you.
I believe I have an alt that has been previously circulated, Mr Mayor.
So you're moving the alt, Councillor Pugsley?
Yes, please.
Okay, moving, we've got the alt up. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Campbell, do I have any opposition? Councillor Pugsley, did you wish to speak?
Yes, for the benefit of the audience and those listening online, the only difference between what was proposed and my alt is that we add in a community representative, which I believe that we used to have. So I believe it's very important in this instance with the trust that we have a community representative, sorry, it is very, it's getting late, that has the expertise to help us to administer the trust, thank you.
No, thank you, Councillor Pugsley. Councillor Campbell, did you wish to speak or reserve?
Reserve, Mr Mayor.
Reserve, thank you, Councillor Campbell. Do I have a speaker for the motion? Speaker against the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillor Campbell, you're reserved, do you wish to speak? Okay, Councillor Pugsley, you don't get the option to close because there's no opposition. Councillors, we've had speakers, so we'll now put that to the vote, all those in favour. Councillor Potter, Councillor Morgan, Councillor Howe, Councillor Gibson, Councillor Barnes, Councillor Pugsley, Councillor Campbell and myself, I declare that motion carried unanimously. Councillors, we move on to item 10.5, Latrobe Regional Airport, commencing on page 278 of the agenda. Councillors, Councillor Howe, you're moving.
Happy to move, thanks, Mr Mayor.
Bear with me, I've lost a page. Councillor Barnes, I take it you're seconding? Bear with me. Second, Barnes. Councillor Howe, would you like to speak?
No opposition.
Sorry? Oh, any opposition, sorry? No opposition? Councillor Howe, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The airport is one of Latrobe City's key assets, contributing both to the recreational enjoyment and to economic growth. We've seen new industries and employment opportunities, particularly in the hydrogen and the drone sector. This committee, sorry, is important for the future development of the airport, providing strategic advice. Based on the officer's review, some of the changes recommended is moving from a community asset committee to an advisory committee, staggering the appointment of the seven community members to ensure continuity while filling vacancies. It also includes representatives from Glawack and the Latrobe Valley Aero Club. As a previous and current member of the board, these are all changes which I support, thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Howe. Councillor Barnes, you seconded, did you wish to speak?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor.
All righty, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillor Howe, you miss out again, there's no opposition, spoke too well. Okay, councillors, we need to put this to the vote, all those in favour. Councillor Potter, Councillor Morgan, Councillor Howe, Councillor Gibson, Councillor Barnes, Councillor Pugsley, Councillor Campbell and myself, I declared that motion carried unanimously. Okay, folks, we move on to item 10.6, Tourism and Major Events Advisory Committee Recommendation, February 2025, commencing on page 299 of the agenda. Councillor Howe is moving, do I have a seconder? Councillor Morgan is seconding, do I have any opposition? Councillor Howe, it's over to you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor and through you. As Chair of the Tourism and Major Events Advisory Committee, it's always a pleasure to present their recommendations to council and highlight the committee's work. This month, they're recommending funding for the Gippsland New Energy Conference from 2025 to 2027 at $20,000 per year. This event will have a 33 to 1 economic impact totaling $663,000. And just as importantly, it will showcase Latrobe City's capabilities to host major business conferences. Last year, we used GPAC, the Town Hall, the Little Theatre and the surrounding areas for the event. The conference will feature keynote speakers, panel discussions, workshops and exhibitions on offshore wind, hydrogen, community energy projects, workforce training and the circular economy. We will expect over 800 participants, including leaders from across Australia and the world. This is a fantastic opportunity for Latrobe City, as we advocate to be a key player in the next generation of energy. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Howe. Councillor Morgan, did you wish to speak or reserve?
I'll reserve, thank you.
Reserve, no worries. Councillors, do we have any speakers for the motion? Any speakers against the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Bingo, back to you, Councillor Morgan.
Wonderful, I will speak this time.
No worries.
I think this recommendation from Tamiak is a really wonderful way to showcase our region and to really highlight what we have to offer in terms of our venues, in terms of us as an innovation hub, a new energy hub. I think it's a positive, as Councillor Howe mentioned in his little speech there. We will be getting a really wonderful economic investment out of this into our region. And we will be seeing people from not only across the state but across the country and internationally coming to the Latrobe Valley for this conference. And having it over three years as well, that's a continued investment into our region. And I think it's a really, really wonderful opportunity for us. So I'm very happy to second this.
Thank you, Councillor Morgan. Do I have a speaker for the motion? Speaker against the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Okay, councillors, we've had speakers, so we're going to put it to the vote, all those in favour. Councillor Potter, Councillor Morgan, Councillor Howe, Councillor Gibson, Councillor Barnes, Councillor Pugsley, Councillor Campbell and myself, I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors, I note on the next issue, I'm going to actually ask a question of the CEO. We're recommending a councillor for a committee position. There's no conflict of interest with that, is there? No, that's great.
No, Mr Mayor.
No, you don't have to leave, no. All right, councillors, we move on to our next item, which is item 10.7. Municipal Association of Victoria Substitute Delegate, commencing on page 311 of the agenda. Councillors, do I have a mover? Moved, Councillor Barnes, do I have a seconder? Councillor Pugsley, do I have any opposition? All right, Councillor Barnes, did you wish to speak?
Yeah, well, thank you, Mr Mayor. The appointment of Councillor Gibson.
Councillor Campbell.
Councillor, sorry, Councillor Campbell will be in the council as a substitute and delegate and advise the MAV accordingly.
Yep, thank you, Councillor Barnes. Have you fit, sorry? He's done, okay.
I'm done, mate.
I thought there was a pregnant pause there for a minute, sorry, because the time clock hadn't even started, we haven't even got it going. Okay, Councillor Pugsley, did you wish to speak?
I wish to reserve, thank you.
Okay, do we have any speakers for the motion? Speakers against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak? Councillor Pugsley, you're reserved, did you want to speak? No, okay. Councillor Barnes, you don't get to close because we've had no opposition. Therefore, we'll put it to the vote, councillors, all those in favour. Councillor Potter, Councillor Morgan, Councillor Howe, Councillor Gibson, Councillor Barnes, Councillor Pugsley. You voting. Councillor Campbell, Councillor Harriman, I know it's getting late, folks. And myself, therefore I declare the motion carried unanimously. We move on to item 10.8, I'm just checking the time, yep, we've still got time. Item 10.8, Community Engagement Update, it is 10.8 we're up to, isn't it? Yep. Community Update, Proposed Long-Term Lease for Caligny Telecommunication Tower, commencing on page 314 of the agenda. Do I have a mover? Councillor Campbell, do I have a seconder? Councillor Pugsley, do I have any opposition? Councillor Campbell, do you wish to speak?
Yes, Mr Mayor. This has a lot of benefits, it's for the CFA and also rental income. And it's up at Caligny, there's not a lot of reception up there and it's only a positive thing, yeah.
Thank you, Councillor Campbell. Councillor Pugsley, did you wish to speak or reserve?
In this instance, I'm going to speak. I just wanted to reiterate what one of our speakers said during their presentation about it is all about safety. I believe that the extra tower or the tower will actually give that safety that is needed during bushfires but also being a rural farming community for the people that are working their land.
the, for the people that are working their land.
Yep. Thank you councillor Pugsley. Councillors, do I have a speaker for the motion?
Through you, Mr Mayor, I'm happy to support this. Uh, people might remember the, the fires a few years ago around that way, um, too lots of fires out that way and also the storm damage that occurred twenty eighteen. And one of the issues has been the communications. It is imperative for emergency services to have the towers in for the communications, but not only the, the actual emergency services, it's the locals, the people. There, there were a lot of people there who could not get the, the message out about themselves because the, the actual, um, uh, now what would you call it? Yeah, phone system, whatever you want to call it. The telecommunications system might be a better way to put it, wasn't there? So, um, there were many, many people who were very worried and couldn't get hold of their loved ones and vice versa. So, you know, um, we, we hear at different times about people saying, oh, don't have it here. But how many of them actually have a mobile phone? I would suggest an awful lot of them do. So i- it becomes like a NIMBY, not in my backyard. So I, we've had one recently, we have one near my place. Um, if you don't want a mobile phone and you don't want the emergency services, fine, say no. But if you want that, you have to have the infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wish to speak? Alright, uh, we had, haven't had any speakers against, so you don't get to close. Councillor Campbell. Alright, councillors, we've had speakers, so we'll put that to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Pugsley, councillor Campbell and myself, I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors, we move on to urgent business. Do we have, I've had nobody bring up any urgent business, is there any urgent business that a councillor wishes to raise? No, alright, we'll move on from urgent business into reports for noting. First item up is twelve point one, which is the Quarterly Budget Report, December twenty twenty four. Do I have a mover? For, yep, councillor Howe, thank you. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Campbell, do I have any opposition? Councillor Howe, would you like to speak?
Uh, just briefly through you, thanks, Mr Chair. Um, under the Local Government Act, this is a requirement to present a quarterly report to council. Um, but regardless of this requirement, I believe it's important to report to our community on our financial performance in relation to the budget. As noted earlier, we're projecting a two point eight million cash surplus for this financial year. Uh, the balance sheet shows that liquidity ratio was seven point nine to one. Um, the comprehensive income statement forecasts a surplus of sixteen point three for the full financial year, which represents an unfavorable variance um, to the adoptive budget, but this is mainly due to expenditure from funding carried forward from previous financial years and the reduction in expected capital grants. Uh, the report is full of detailed information, but what it does demonstrate is that we are in a strong financial position, with all financial ratios expected to remain within the industry standards. So, uh, big congratulations to the CEO and his team for an outstanding performance. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you councillor Howe. Councillor Campbell, did you wish to speak or reserve?
Reserve.
Reserve?
Mr Mayor.
Okay, councillors, do I have a speaker for the motion? Speaker against the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillor Campbell, back to you, reserved.
I don't wish to say anymore, thanks.
Okay, no worries. Thank you councillors, we've had no opposition, so we'll go straight to the vote. All those councillors in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Pugsley, councillor Campbell and myself, I declare the motion carried unanimously. Next item up, twelve point two. Contract Variations For The Period First Of October Twenty Twenty Four To Thirty First To December Twenty Twenty Four, commencing on page three sixty three of the agenda. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Campbell, do I have a seconder? Councillor Morgan, do I have any opposition? No, councillor Campbell, would you like to speak?
No, Mr Mayor.
Okay, councillor Ca- uh, councillor Morgan, would you like to speak or reserve?
I'm happy to not speak, thank you.
Okay, councillors, do I have a speaker for the motion? Against the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? No, seeing there's been no speakers, I'll declare the motion carried unanimously, is that correct, or we've got, still got to put it to a vote? Still got to go to a vote? Alright, councillors, we're going to the vote? Under current rules. Those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Pugsley, councillor Campbell and myself, I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors, we move on to item twelve point three. Gippsland Curbside Waste Collaboration Procurement Organics Contract, commencing on page three seventy seven of the agenda. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Morgan, do I have a seconder? If I have no, uh, councillor Pugsley, do I have any opposition? Councillor Morgan, would you like to speak?
Very briefly, um, I think this is, this is just a report to us, but um, it's really important that we have the ability to continue processing organic waste locally and this does just that, so I'm very happy to move it, thank you.
Thank you councillor Morgan. Councillor Pugsley, did you wish to speak or reserve?
Uh, reserve at this time, thank you.
Reserve? No worries. Do I have any speakers for the motion? Any speakers against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak? Councillor Pugsley, you reserved? No, not happy to speak. Okay, councillors, we've had no opposition, so we'll go straight to the vote. Those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Pugsley, councillor Campbell and myself, I declare that motion carried unanimously. I note you councillor Campbell. Okay, councillors, we move on to item twelve point four. Council Procurement Policy, C E O Delegation, commencing on page three eighty two of the agenda. Councillor Campbell, I noted you.
I'd like to um, mo- put forward an alt, Mr Mayor.
Okay.
I'd like to move, um, the alt is previously circulated and socialized.
Okay, yep.
Yep.
Can we bring councillor Campbell's alt up on screen, please? Thanks Courtney. We'll just wait for that to come up, councillors. See, one of the alternate motions that was socialized for all councillors, councillor Gibson, I note you. Just give councillors a chance to have a read, we're all good. Yep, councillor Gibson.
Seconding, thanks.
Councillor Gibson is seconding, do I have any opposition? Councillor Potter. Councillor Campbell, did you wish to speak?
Oops. Yes, Mr Mayor. Um, I originally dropped it down to five hundred thousand, but that's what it was um, at twenty twenty one and um, after listening to my co-councillors, um, I thought seven fifty was reasonable to be in line with our next door neighbours at Warrigal. They have, and their population's not much different, but they're a bigger growing, they're growing very fast. Um, it just gives us more transparency to the ratepayers, good governance and I just feel like it's a financially sound decision that we're watching every dollar and in a reasonable amount. And um, I checked with the officer today and the um, having this change would equate to an extra report probably once a year. So there won't be any, a lot of extra work, yeah. So, yeah.
Yep, thank you councillor Campbell. Councillor Gibson, you seconded, did you wish to speak or reserve?
Reserve, please.
Reserve, thank you. Councillor Potter, you spoke against.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, through you. I strongly oppose uh, the reduction in the purchasing delegation across the organisation by twenty five percent that's been proposed here. Um, this would see the delegations, you know, unnecessarily administrative burdens on, right through the organisation, it will slow down the essential operations and it will hinder our ability to actually deliver timely and effective services. Currently, every purchase must go through a rigorous approval process of at least three council officers. This includes compliance checks by our procurement team to ensure adherence to the procurement policy. So reducing delegations will only add to the workload, increasing the purchase requisition approvals by a fifty six percent for managers and a staggering a hundred and sixteen percent for council. These figures re- clearly illustrate the strain this change will make on our decision-making processes. So the consequences of this shift go beyond mere administrative efficiencies, it will directly impact our workforce's ability to act swiftly in critical situations. In building maintenance, emergency management and depot operations, there is frequent need for quick procurement to address urgent needs, safety hazards or unforeseen challenges. Uh, if officers are forced to wait for additional layers of approval, we risk delaying essential work, ultimately leading to higher costs, increased risk and potential disruption to our community services. Furthermore, the increased administrative burden on our senior officers and council is just not practical, it's counterproductive. More time spent on approvals means less time available for strategic decision-making and service delivery improvements. Instead of adding unnecessary red tape, we should be focusing on streamlining the processes, empowering our teams and ensuring efficiency, efficiencies in procurement management. For these reasons, I urge you to reject this proposed reduction in delegation. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Potter. Councillor Morgan, I noticed you had your hand up as well, do you speak for or against?
Against.
Against? No worries.
Um, so, I believe that this alt is doing a great disservice to this organisation. Um, in the report that was provided to us, um, we were given feedback from the Independent Audit and Risk Committee. Um, and based on that, it shows that we should likely increase our delegation to the C E O. I think it's imperative that we do that instead of reducing it, um, to ensure that our organisation stays as agile as it possibly can be and that we meet the demands being put on us by increased costs, inflation and the demands that we have as a growing regional city. So based on many fun financial measures, um, C P I has increased by or sixteen point three percent since December twenty twenty one, when this, um, our procurement policy was last updated, sixteen point three percent. Um, the Wage Price Index, so the cost of labour, has increased by roughly ten point seven percent since December twenty twenty one. Um, construction costs have increased by an eye-watering thirty point eight percent at least since uh, the beginning of twenty twenty one. That's a huge increase in costs. If we don't raise the delegation or if we indeed lower the delegation, we're putting ourselves on the back foot financially, we're putting ourselves on the back foot to respond in an agile, forward-thinking way to the demands that are placed on us as a growing regional city. Um, I think an increase to the delegation would better, would see us better functioning as an organisation and it would also allow this council chamber to focus on the strategic decision-making and to focus on governance and what really, really matters, instead of being hampered down by bureaucracy, by making this organisation less efficient, by creating more work for staff, for officers. It's not, I don't quite understand, as the Audit and Risk Committee noted in their submission as well, what the problem is that we are trying to resolve with this change in delegation. I think we need to be quite cautious about lowering it, um, because even though Borbor Shire is our neighbour, they are a shire, we are a city, we have other needs and we need to grow and reducing this delegation is not allowing us to do that, so thank you.
Thank you councillor Morgan. Councillors, do I have a speaker for the motion? Speak councillor Pugsley.
I'm going to make a quick, uh, thank you through the chair, Mr Mayor. I just want to point out that it's important to remember that council's money is really ratepayers' money and we need to treat it accordingly. We need to have the due process to make sure that, that spending is, is in line with um, what is best for ratepayers, thank you.
Yep, thank you councillor Pugsley. Do I have a speaker against? Councillor Howe?
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, a hundred percent agree with what um, councillor Morgan just said before. As Victoria's leading regional city, um, we can't really compare us to any of our neighbours. Um, but I'll start, I'll just touch a bit on our, on our Audit and Risk Committee's feedback. So this is a committee that's made up of three independent members, uh, including the Chair, which all has, uh, extensive background and experience in audit and risk. Uh, there's a representative from the Victorian Auditor General's Office, um, as well from H L B Man- Manjudd, which is an award-winning chartered accounting and advisory firm and we do have councillors and council staff on there as well. So yeah, their feedback was, um, a further understanding is required of the proposed reduction in delegation in regard to what specific problems this is trying to resolve. Um, at the moment, there is no problem, things are working as they should. Uh, the second comment was council has in place acceptable, acceptable internal controls aligned with M A V's best practice procurement guidelines. So the, the committee's confident with, with our internal controls, best practice. Um, that will lead to the hampering of management, management in their ability to be an agile organisation, uh, well that speaks for itself. Uh, with capital costs increasing significantly, the current delegation may be too low of anything, yeah, so we really should be looking at, is, is a million appropriate, maybe it should be more. Um, and I just want to let everyone know that we've already approved the spending of the, of the C E O. It's either, we've either approved it through the budget or we've approved it through passing a, a motion in this chamber, so he's not spending money he's not allowed to do. Um, he's, what he's doing is, is what we've told him to do. You're, you're allowed to spend up to this to build those toilet blocks or to build those pavilions, so, um, I think, um, at the very least, we should leave it the same, um, but, um, if we want to, we should, we should do an appropriate, um, um, look at the whole delegation system, um, because there could be that we need to increase it rather than decrease it. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks councillor Howe. Do I have a speaker for the motion? Speaker against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak? Councillor Gibson, you reserved, did you wish to speak? Yep.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Not everyone around this table would remember why we put in place the tighter measures in the first place. There were issues, um, policing, it ended up with the police and that's why the tighter measures have been put in place. They have been let go compared to what they were and it's not to say any officers um, in the organisation are um, responsible for anything that has happened in the past, but it is very prudent to have tight measures, it's not as tight as it could be, but it is prudent to have that. It is also very prudent for us to, um, to be wise with our money. And as I said, the, what it was going to be, which was five hundred thousand, there has been a, um, a lift of that of fifty percent to seven hundred and fifty. Other organisations that are much greater than us actually have a million dollars and we're not in that boat. Now, I, I really, just because, and I say it because I don't see it like this, but just because it's ratepayers' money, we can give, um, whoever the ability to spend um, greater amounts, I don't believe in that, I'm sorry. This is ratepayers' money and we have to be very, very prudent of how it's spent. There is very good reasons why tighter measures were put in, in the past. Now, it stopped the issue, why have it, that you can undo it and potentially create more issues going forward. We need to be transparent and we may, need to be extremely cautious with spending ratepayers' money. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillor Campbell, did you wish to close? Councillor Campbell, did you wish to close?
No, I've got nothing more to say, Mr Mayor.
Okay, councillors, we've had speakers, we'll put that to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Pugsley, councillor Campbell and myself. Those opposed? Councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe. I declare the alternate motion carried. Councillors, before we can, sorry councillor Howe?
Remind you it's nine o'clock, Mr Mayor.
Yeah, just about to.
Happy to move for an extension of time.
You're moving to extend, we're going to need a motion just for the new councillors. Once we hit nine o'clock, we have to have a motion to extend the council meeting. Councillor Howe is moving. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Gibson, do I have any opposition? Any councillor wish to speak?
One night I will.
Councillors, we still have to put it to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Pugsley, councillor Campbell and myself. Okay, councillors, that motion is passed unanimously and we keep plugging away. One chance to get home early and you've blown it, guys. Okay, we move straight on to item, table, items for tabling. Sorry, no, items twelve point five, which is the presentation of the Audit and Risk Committee meeting minutes of the nineteenth of December twenty twenty-four, commencing on page four thirty-four. Do I have a mover? Councillor Morgan, thank you. Mover is councillor Morgan, do I have a seconder? Councillor Campbell, do I have any opposition? Do I have any councillor, councillor Morgan, do you wish to speak?
No, thank you.
No, okay. Councillor Campbell, do you wish to speak? Okay, any other councillor wish to speak? Okay, councillors, we'll put that to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Pugsley, councillor Campbell and myself, I declare that motion carried unanimously. Councillors, we move on to items for tabling. Councillor Gibson, I note you, bear with me. Items for tabling, there are, there's one item in this section, item fourteen point one, tabling of Moi outdoor pool petition, commencing on page four fifty-five of the agenda. Councillor Gibson, I noted you and councillor Pugsley, I note you. Councillor Gibson?
Moving please.
Councillor Gibson is moving. Councillor Pugsley, I take it you're seconding?
Seconding please.
No worries. Do I have any opposition? Councillor Gibson, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It is our governance rules that when a petition comes in, it lays on the table effectively for one month and that's exactly what this is. While it's a great petition for the Moi outdoor pool, which has a real issue with how cold it is, especially in summer, it has to lay on the table. I congratulate Reg and the team for putting all of this together, but I'll speak further to it when it comes off the table. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillor Pugsley, did you wish to speak or reserve?
Reserve at this time.
Reserve. Councillors, do I have any speakers for the motion? Speakers against the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Back to you councillor Pugsley, do you wish to speak?
No, thank you.
Okay, councillor Gibson, you don't get to close, we're speakers against. Councillors, we've had speakers, so I need to put the motion to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Pugsley, councillor Campbell, councillor, you've got to keep it up, you're the last on the list, and myself, I better put that in there. Councillors, I declare that motion carried unanimously. Councillors, that brings us to meetings closed to the public. I need a mover to close this meeting to the public. Councillor Gibson is moving. Councillor Campbell is seconding. Do I have any opposition? No, councillors, we'll put it to the vote. All those in favour of closing the meeting? Councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Campbell, councillor Pugsley, councillor Barnes, councillor Gibson and myself, I declare the meeting closed. Thank you councillors and to our gallery and those watching on the live stream. Thank you very much for joining us tonight and putting up with such a late one. We look forward to catching up with you at our next meeting next month. Thank you very much.